I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna take a picture. We're gonna stay up here. I'm gonna take a picture. I'm just gonna grab my phone.
Nicely done Samantha. We're gonna move on to participation by others. Our SOAR award student was not available this evening, so their award will be given at the next business meeting. I'll invite now the student representative to share any updates. He's not here? Okay. Okay. Alright, yeah, we can hear from the student council. Sounds good, yes.
It's okay. Okay, so my name is Elia.
My name is Mahak.
And the few things that happened throughout the school in the past week is winter guard. The Methuen Winter Guard won first place at NSBA finals, sorry. Okay. At NSBA finals, and this was a huge accomplishment for the team. The team had an undefeated season with getting first for finals. The Methuen Winter Guard also placed third place at a WGI Winter Guard International, with a placement of fourth in the country in their division. The first-place finals win was their first in about 20 years. This resulted in the team getting moved up a division.
Next up was junior prom. So on Thursday, April 10, junior prom took place at Castleton in Woodham, New Hampshire. The theme was Enchanted Garden. It was an exciting event which all juniors who attended enjoyed. The variety of food was really enjoyable and delicious. The favorite was the Chicken Alfredo among all students. And students were also given desserts, which was ice cream and brownies. The students danced and sung all throughout prom and made dance circles hyping everyone up. The song choices were also great, and it resulted in a lot of fun, which allowed for 30 extra minutes of prom.
Our next one is M.A. Science/Engineering Fair. Congratulations, congratulations to senior scholars Thomas Lee and junior scholar Yasmin Bria, who represented Methuen High at the Massachusetts Science+Engineering Fair at Gillette Stadium on Friday, April 4, 2025.
So, My Voice Advisory Board finalist. So on April 4, MHS had welcomed members of the Methuen Youth Community Center to speak with potential future members of the My Voice Advisory Board. Students learned about the young youth and the challenges that also came with creating a young center, and their vision for the youth center. If selected, Advisory Board members will play an integral role in the creation, development, and implementation of programming at the Methuen Youth Community Center.
And then our last one for today is our multicultural showcase, April 17. On Thursday, April 17, MHS will hold the In-School Multicultural Showcase. Students will have the opportunity to present their culture with staff and students throughout arts, craft, dance, music, clothing, cultural objects, and more. And that is all that we have for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we're getting word that right now, folks who are watching, I believe on either TV or however this is being put out to the public, that nobody can hear sound. So, obviously, we're here in an open meeting. This is sufficient for open meeting law. Meeting, I know, is being recorded, but we just got that word, and Member Shabelia mentioned that too.
They were working on it. She said it should be fixed now.
Okay, great. We'll move on now to the introduction of our outstanding MHS athletes. Superintendent, it's all yours.
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to call up interim athletic director, Mr. Tom Ryan. He has a few coaches with him today and some teams that we want to recognize from the winter sports that have continued. I will say, another group that we do plan on bringing in front of the school committee is the girls' hockey team who made it to the state, the state final eight. And we had done that in the past. Tonight, they could not all be here with the coach tonight, so we hope to bring them at another time. But we have some outstanding athletes that have done some remarkable things to represent Methuen High School, and we want to recognize those students tonight.
Absolutely. So we will start with the wrestlers first. So, I'd like to introduce you to Janessa Santiago, who became the first female New England champion in Methuen High School history. Here are some other accolades throughout the year. 24-0 record, Framingham Holiday Tournament Champion, George Bossy Lowell Holiday Champion. If you go to Lowell Holidays, that's one of the premier tournaments in the country. The Division One North Champion, Division One State Champion, Mass. All-State Champion, Boston Global All-Scholastic, Boston Herald All-Scholastic, and the MVC Female Wrestler of the Year. And of course, like I mentioned, the first New England champion female wrestler in Methuen High School history. She's good. Janessa Santiago. Coach is with them right now. Would you like to say anything? We have Coach John Chagru is here with his brother, Coach Paul Chagru's. The Chagru's are one of the wrestling dynasties of Methuen High School. Do you want to say anything, Coach?
Sure.
I didn't prepare.
I did not prepare anything. We luckily had Janessa. This is her first year at Methuen High School. And when we first met her, there was rumors just kind of circling throughout the school that we had this girl who had some experience. So, we finally had a chance to meet Janessa, and we said, "Hey, you gonna wrestle this year?" And at the time, she was like, "I don't really know. I'm not really sure if I want to." And so, we kind of went into our sales pitch, and eventually, we got her to join. And it was probably the best thing that happened to Methuen Wrestling for her and for us. So, I wish we had a few more years together. Unfortunately, we just had one year, but we made the most of it. I couldn't speak more highly of her. She's gonna be very successful in whatever she does. Her work ethic and how she fit right into the team was amazing. So, congratulations, Janessa.
Alright, so we kind of move right along. We're gonna do the track athletes. So, we have an individual performer, and we have a relay that the individual is actually on, and the relay here. So first, this indoor season, Junior Lauren Quam competed at the highest level in the 55-meter, finishing her season at the New Balance Nationals. During the season, she became a three-time MVC champion in the 55, going undefeated in the event. She ended her season as the Division One State Champion, the runner-up at All-States, and bested her third-place ranking at the New England Meet from last year by placing second in a time of 6.97 seconds, breaking the seven-second barrier for the second time in her career. Lauren is also part of the 4x200 relay team, which I'll talk about right now. The 4x200 relay girls team of Junior Alicia Santana Sosa, Senior Bella Fiore, Senior Kiara Fitzpatrick, and Junior Lauren Quam were perfect this indoor season. They became the first girls' 4x200 relay team in school history to win the MVC Championship. They continued their dominance at the state level and became the Division One State Relay, the Division One State, and All-State Champions. At the New England Meet, the girls were the top team in Massachusetts and placed fourth. With their hard work, dedication, and overall team chemistry, these four girls continued to get faster and faster as the season progressed, breaking their own school record four times, finishing this season at the New Balance Nationals Meet. So, I'd like to call up Junior Alicia Santana Sosa, Santana Sosa, Senior Bella Fiore, Senior Kiara Fitzpatrick, and Junior Lauren Quam. And, oh, I forgot to mention, do that. They are with tonight. Brittany Caprio is the head coach of the indoor track team. She also is the head coach of our outdoor track team. Ms. Caprio was probably gonna say something really long.
These girls had the benefit of competing together last year as a group, so it's disappointing that we lose two of them this year, because I think they really came together as a group, but we do have two returning, so hopefully, there's still a lot to come in the future. But these girls really outperformed, I think, their own expectations, and they represent our program to the best of their abilities. I'm truly honored that I got to have all four of them compete for me. They're wonderful young women. No.
Lauren, would you like to speak? Okay. Maybe next. Lauren's saving that for next year, she says. Next year's a big one.
Alright, next, we're, congratulations. Next, we're on to public participation. We have four students who have signed up to take part in public participation tonight. We have Nathan, Leah, Sophia, and Lacey. Feel free to approach the podium.
Hello, my name is Nathan Touch. This is Leah Dehda, Sophia Cirilla, and Lacey Cludier. We are A grade students from Mrs. DeFusco's civics class at the March Government School. We're here to talk about the lack of access to free feminine hygiene products in our schools. Period poverty is the lack of access to safe and hygienic menstrual products. Throughout the school year, we have researched the negative effects this has on female students. This affects upper school students' hygiene, mental health, attendance, and confidence. 14 students have missed school due to lack of access to feminine hygiene products. Moreover, 96% of March upper school students reported that it would be beneficial to add free feminine hygiene products to the bathrooms.
Not having access to hygiene products in the bathroom can negatively impact a student's education. When female students need a feminine hygiene product, they have to ask to go to the bathroom, sign out of the room, realize they have their period, go back to class, ask for a pass to the nurse, and explain why they need to go to the nurse, go down to the nurse, wait for the nurse to get a pad and/or tampon, go back to the bathroom, and then return to class. We timed this entire process, and it took 6 minutes and 40 seconds. This is a lot of class time to miss. Not having these products can negatively impact a student's education. Having access to free products in the bathroom will lead to less time consumption. Also, 40% of March upper school students reported feeling uncomfortable asking a teacher for a pass to go to the nurse for hygiene products.
The lack of easy access to feminine hygiene products is a big problem in our school, and we are here to share an idea to help solve the problem. One solution is a website called GoOnFlow.com, where you can purchase dispensers and period products. GoOnFlow uses high-quality products with no toxic chemicals or dyes to ensure that females can access monthly necessities. This website gives discounts to schools and is cheaper than other suppliers. Also, GoOnFlow dispensers do not require students to pay for the use of the products. All products in the dispenser are free to students. The current dispensers are never filled and require students to carry quarters. When we surveyed students, 86% said that they do not carry quarters. Also, when we asked custodial staff about access to the dispensers, they reported not having keys to unlock them. Therefore, they are unable to stock the current dispensers. This is a problem.
We would love to get GoOnFlow feminine hygiene dispensers in the upper school bathrooms. We priced dispensers and products on GoOnFlow.com. Three Model E dispensers would be a one-time cost of $1,023, or $341 each. The Model E is a wall-mounted dispenser that holds both pads and tampons. GoOnFlow recommends 15 products per female student per school year. To fill the dispensers for one year, it would cost roughly $1,458 for 4,500 pads and tampons. Putting dispensers in the bathroom will ensure students will miss less class time and will improve their mental health. We would appreciate any help you can provide. Thank you for listening and for your consideration on this important topic that affects a large portion of the population in Methuen Public Schools.
Thank you for addressing those concerns. That's something that I can work on addressing. Thank you.
We would also like to give you these posters that we have made that kind of explain it a little bit more. Is that alright with you?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak who did not sign up for public participation? If not, we do have some written comments that the vice chair will read into the record.
This is from Wanda Foley, 12 Linwood Ave. Good evening, Superintendent Wong and school committee members. I have three children that have participated in the fine arts programs such as chorus, band, and drama club over the last few years in the Methuen Public Schools, not to mention the very many friends of my kids who also participate. It is such an awesome opportunity to watch them partake in these events. It has opened up their brains and bodies to challenge themselves to learn and do something more than just academics or athletics. My son came home last week and said they had been told that next year they might not have drama, band, or chorus. He said some kids were so upset and crying when they heard the news. Please look elsewhere to find the funds to not allow this to be the area to take the fall for the budget. I can imagine the difficulty in planning a well-balanced budget and figuring out where to make cuts that are needed if more funding is not an option. This is not the right choice for our community. It is not the right choice for the students or faculty. I have children that do well in athletics, but what about all the students that the arts is their only way of expression and joy? We shouldn't let them think it is dismissible for part of their Methuen education. The time and effort that teachers and staff pour into organizing these events is admirable and appreciated. I am sure my letter, or at least I am hoping that the anger and disappointment that I read on Facebook groups from parents and community members translates to more participation letters or people willing to read them out loud themselves about the same topic. We need to do better for Methuen. I am also unclear as to why students still need Chromebooks. If this was an option for remote COVID days, and that is long gone, why are we unable to return to paper and books? Just curious, what is the difference in the budget for those comparisons? Thank you for your time and attention regarding these matters, Wanda Foley.
That's all we have for public participation. That was submitted in writing. If you were unable to make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to MarthaSaroyes@M-A-S-I-R-O-Y-S@methuen.k12.m-a.us before 3:00 PM on the day of the school committee meeting. Next is the approval of minutes. We need a motion and a second to approve the Policy Subcommittee Minutes from March 6, 2025.
So moved.
Motion is from the vice chair. The second is from Member Dzoglio. Any discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion and a second now to approve the minutes of March 10, 2025.
So moved.
Motion from the vice chair. Second is from Member Shabelia. Any discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 24, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair. Second is from Member Dzoglio. Any discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Lastly, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 31, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Dzoglio. Second is from the vice chair. Any discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we're on to staff reports. Superintendent, I'll invite you to begin your fiscal year '26 budget update.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I don't have a, there's no memo or anything of that nature just on here so that we can share with the public sort of where we are in the process and our meeting on Wednesday. That will be a budget workshop. The slides presentation for that meeting have been posted. You also have an updated version as well. So, I think a few things. There was an incredibly productive meeting today in the mayor's office between my team and the mayor and the CFO. And I think that those conversations will continue over the coming weeks. Everybody is well aware that this is going to be a very challenging budget cycle and a very challenging situation for the city, and that's us and everybody else. And so, we have work to do. But, again, I think everybody around the table is gonna put our heads together and do the best work we can. It does not mean we're gonna get everything that we believe we need. That, you know, that is a challenge, and will continue to be a challenge for us and for us as a committee, working towards the best that we can provide for our students. So, I know there was a lot of conversation over the past four days. So I know there was a lot of conversation over the past four days, not so much directly with me, but around me about conversations had with staff. You know, we always have tried to be very transparent with our staff if they're going to see their positions on a chart in public. That is what we did, and unfortunately, that just got to a place that we couldn't rein back in, and there was no ill intent of that at all that we were doing. So unfortunately, I think there's just a lot of different narratives out there right now about what's happening, why, when. But I think if everybody could take a deep breath with us and, you know, watch on Wednesday and just continue to have the conversations that we're having with us, I think that would be very beneficial in the process. So I leave it a little bit at that, and Mayor, if you want to say...
I'll just, I'll just reiterate that. So, you know, I heard all weekend from folks within the school department, top to bottom, especially folks who are teaching in our schools, indications already that positions have been cut. The school committee has not taken a single vote on the fiscal year 2026 budget. As of right now, nothing has been touched. The fine arts department at the high school is not going anywhere. I just want to state that right at the outset. So there's a lot of, I think, assumptions that have been made. I don't know if it's been due to language that's been used or what. I can't speak to any of that, but all I can say is this school committee has not voted on a single line item or any aspect of the budget whatsoever. And so any discussion regarding specific cuts are, it's all extremely premature as we discussed today. So I just want to state that for folks who are watching. In the, in the fine arts department of high school, just one example, it's not going anywhere. And I'll leave it at that, and we'll have more to say on Wednesday. We'll move on to the student enrollment data report. I'll invite questions, discussion from the committee regarding that report. Member Shabelia?
So with all this talk of money, which is everyone's favorite topic right now, the question was posed to me by one of our friends on the city council as to how our budget was prepared and how we managed to cover the additional 110, 12-ish kids, especially the high needs on the sheet. I was hoping, I mean, I have a general idea, and I think it goes back to Circuit Breaker, but I was hoping you could explain it so everyone can understand.
So I think it's, it's twofold. So yes, there is some money under Circuit Breaker that has supported some of our students coming in with needs that were unexpected with special education. There's also a level of with our English language learners, we have caseloads that might have started at 29 this year that are now at 54. So when you're talking about what, what one person is actually able to service, those numbers just keep rising, right? So we're not able to provide students with the amount of service necessarily they would be getting if they had less, if they had a staff member who had less of a caseload. So that's typically what we would see in the English learner category. As those numbers rise and we weren't expecting those students in September, those caseloads just grow, right? We've had a couple of, we haven't this year. Last year, we did have to ask for an additional ESL teacher in the middle of the year because we were over 60 at one of the schools with caseloads, and we, we just, we couldn't even, we could not provide the students with what they needed with one person and splitting the kids amongst multiple. So we did have to do that, not this year, but last year, I believe we did that for the Timony when we saw exponential growth in August to September and October. I think we requested a new ESL staff somewhere in early fall. So, so it's, it's a challenge because we're, yes, we're providing, we have to provide students with the services. I would say over the course of the year, we've had one-to-one nurses that have been needed for special education kids, one-to-one program assistance. They're all in temporary positions until we vote a new budget, right? We've added those as full-time positions. So all of those things do, we have to provide those services, so it is coming. That particular group of students particularly is coming from Circuit Breaker.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee? Member Willett?
And just to emphasize through the chair to the superintendent, once we go past that October 1 date, any new students, we don't even get a prorated amount from the state.
Do not.
So we take the full vote at the local level.
Right.
Okay. Now, does that apply also to special education students?
All of it. So October 1, by regulation, is the only date of enrollment that the state will take our enrollment and set the foundation budget for the following year. There's no second chance, if you would, I asked. Is there any opportunity with the March 1? Because we do the same thing in March. We do a SIMS upstate reporting, and the answer was no. By state regulation, it is the October 1 enrollment. Now, as I think I stated before, you also get a removal, right? So sometimes there's a year where you have more students in October than you do the following September, and yes, you still get those funds. So this is unfortunately, what we're seeing is that opposite effect where we have more students enrolling now during the same school year than we had for the October 1 enrollment. That doesn't happen as often, at least that I've experienced in my tenure.
And there's no legislation that you're aware of at Beacon Hill that prorated, or people do tuition statements that are quarterly just to be able to map out the expenses. But if, once we go past October 1, we take the full boat as a local community on these students. Now, you try to balance out, we might have some withdrawals, and we even it out as best we can, but any students that come into the system, we local take full responsibility.
Yes.
Okay. That's a big issue. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding the student enrollment report? If not, we'll move on to the report from the assistant superintendent of student services. Any questions or concerns on the committee? Going once, going twice? Yep, member Maxwell.
Where is the information for these specific dates posted? Is it shared through Talking Points email, like the supporting friendship presentation for families?
Yep, so the CPAC shares out the information with...
Oh, the CPAC, okay.
Yep, it's the CPAC presentations. You're welcome.
Member Shabelia?
The transportation under McKinney-Vento, is that also rolled into our non-net because it's transportation or because it's associated? So yeah?
Yeah, it's non-net.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the HR report. Any questions or concerns, discussion from the committee? Member Shabelia?
For these positions, the ones that have been vacant all year, I guess I'd like to be able to know which one, which of the perpetually vacant positions are required by, I don't know, by statute, by 504, by whatever the required mechanism is. See which ones of these, which I'm sure your team has already gone through, which ones can be removed and which ones we need to find that magical unicorn to fill.
Yes, we have done that, and at this point, I'm, I can't, I didn't bring my glasses. The majority of these speech and language, school psychologists, there's a lot of psychologists on there, one-to-ones, RBTs, those are definitely being at this point either parceled out, and we're paying staff an additional hourly rate to support, or we're contracting out on a smaller scale than we would having a full-time contracted service provider under contracted services. So for example, I don't have two full-time speech and language therapists that a contracted provider can give me. They're not out there. So I'd have to parcel out to whoever they can give me if I have evaluations or I have additional students that our current staff have to see. I have to pay them hourly over any time that they work outside of their contractual time with additional students. And that's basically what's happening right now, especially with the school psychologists.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair?
I have a question. The, the beginning says that stipends mean that we're paying a Unit A staff stipend to cover additional classrooms per side letter of the agreement. But I don't see any stipend on here, and there are a couple of positions that seem to me should be labeled as stipend and not vacant. And so I'm wondering if, how many, or can you go through this at some point and, and figure out whether or not there are actually stipend positions in there? Because what you said is if the one-on-one is being parceled out, then that should be labeled here as a stipend, not as a vacant.
Yes, I will go through it all again. I think the, the difference is that the stipends were going to cover a full FTE, and right now, we don't have like a person or thing covering a full FTE.
I see.
So like the math teacher, if it was vacant, we had, I think, on here at one point, it was stipended because other teachers took a section of that math, and now it was completely covered. So we considered that stipended, and we were paying that stipend for each of those teachers for the remainder of the school year. But I can definitely go through this again with Colleen and Gina and look through and see if we have some other places that would make more sense or even just redefine it.
Okay.
So what I just said, we just redefine that a little differently, that this is being handled, why multiple people, not all the time as needed, something of that nature.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my concern is that some of these positions are going to be costing us compensatory services, and some of them are actually being covered and aren't costing us compensatory services, and I'd like to know that.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the facilities report. This includes the Timony air quality assessment. Any questions, discussion from the committee? Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I have to give you massive credit since you've entered into the mayor's office of working with the school department. I'm seeing a lot of common themes in these reports, and I think we're going to need during the summer months assistance. Again, we're going to be limited with our budget, but there's like recommendations that should be tackled. I know it was at the MASH and also at the Timony, and something that hopefully it can be done over the summer, even on an emergency basis, because if we're going to be limited with personnel, these are issues that need to be tackled. I know, member Maxwell and myself, we went to the Timony, and I highlighted some of the issues and reinforced them in the report. The only thing I had a question about, because again, it was common themes between the Timony and the MASH, and it's an ongoing thing to remediation and the capital improvement plan and approaching the state and green energy and all these different programs. With the radon, have we ever done testing in our schools for the radon? That, is that something we've ever done? It would be the winter months, you have to do it when you're heating. That's something, again, that's a common theme thing that we might have to map out to do. Yeah. And again, I'm sure we'll have a... I know one of the neighboring states, and I think might be Connecticut, it's by law that the schools have to do regular radon testing, but that was something I know with the MASH report and this report is that to do the radon testing. And I don't have a problem with, you know, saying, okay, do the testing, and we'll have like the clear results. What I have the problem is, is like, we don't do it down the line. That's, you know, something we all want to...
A lot of our exhaust fans on the roof, belts are broken, motors are broken, et cetera. I believe, I forget the number, because they did a bunch of, they're doing it at a model schools, but at the Timony, I want to say they've already replaced 20, 22 exhaust fans, which will draw in more fresh air and take out the stale air. So hopefully that will help with the air quality.
And I, and I think also too is debris and barriers blocking the access to the ventilation, which I think it's just, it's just common recommendations that can be accomplished during the summer when we have...
Well, a lot of times it's just reminding some staff that make sure, a lot of times if you explain how it works, that the air gets sucked in and blowed out, and they know that that's just the path, they keep an eye on it. But a lot of times that goes, you know, it's just not their expertise, you know? It's not their, it's not their thing. So how, you know, why would they even think of that? So I think it's a lot of education or just reminding of staff just to make sure you keep those things clear.
Yeah, and by no means, it's not a criticism of anybody employed, it's just when we have recommendations through reports, I think we just need to follow up on those things. I know with the exterior, we have major issues that need to be accomplished. And I think the radon was a common theme that was between the Timony and the MASH. Now, if we can check it, price it out, and maybe have it prepared for the winter, if we are able to have it financially obtainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Maxwell?
I have a few questions, but I don't know, do you want me to just shoot them all off or go one by one?
Whatever's best for you.
So one of my...
I'll do my best.
One of my questions is, I know it says that we're going to begin the process of switching over to cooling.
Correct.
Heat's off. When is that happening?
We're in the process. I just don't know which schools have been done and which ones haven't.
Okay.
I did get a text from Mr. Willett, I believe, today that the high school's a little cold. I do have to check to see if they're in the process of that change.
Okay.
Today was probably better because it was, because it was probably a little warmer, but...
Okay. What is, what is the BOH?
Board of Health.
Board of Health. In the MASH, it says that the boilers are going to be replaced over the summer. The anticipated start date is June 16, and the bid is open for April 16.
Yep.
Do we, do we have someone that does that in-house now? I thought I took that from our last conversation that they were fixing.
No, this is a major, major, major project. Yeah, yeah. The boilers are coming in from Italy. It's, it's a huge project, so we're trying to get that, that bid done, the bid opening, and get those people on board ASAP.
Okay.
So it can be done over the summer.
I know that in the Timony, well, I'll go to the air quality report in a second, but the, there's no playground request for the Timony, and I noticed there was for another school. In the Timony's playground for the upper school area, there's a few broken parts. A bridge is broken, there's some broken parts to the playground. So if we could find a way to revamp that, that'd be great.
We'll have it inspected and fixed, it needs to get fixed, yeah.
And then the last, my last things were just about the ongoing air quality report. Was the, was an air quality report done at all of the schools or just the Timony?
Timony and the MASH.
Timony and the MASH. The Timony, a lot of the classrooms are above that carbon dioxide PPM. I, I could have sworn that someone had said that if we just opened the windows more, it may solve that problem. I mean, is that happening?
It's amount of fresh air. That's why we went up and changed the exhaust fans right away, because that, that takes out the stale air and draws in, draws in fresh air.
Are teachers allowed to open their windows? They are. I mean, that would be the easiest way and fastest way to...
During cooling season, we don't recommend it because it brings, well, it brings in more moisture, and it's tough to keep the room cool when it's air-conditioned.
Close.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But during heating season, it's...
And then my last question on the air quality report, there's an abbreviation, NC, and I don't know what the NC is in all of the remarks. And a lot of the remarks that are written here are similar to the remarks on the Board of Health report that we got a while back, and when member Willett and I toured the Timony, a lot of these things were on that report. And I just want to make sure that we're not just painting over water stains and we're actually addressing the issue behind the water stains. But yeah, the only other question I have is what's NC? I don't know what NC is. Everything else has an abbreviation.
I'll have to look into that, because I, I don't recall, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but...
Everything else has a, has a key, but just not that one. I feel like it's the most important only because I don't know what it is.
We'll get that for you.
Yeah. That's all.
We'll hear from member Willett and member Dzoglio.
Just a quick note, because I was going through the facilities report. The installation of the LED lights, do we get reimbursement for that for the state? Or do we...
For which ones?
I know any of them, because if we have Mass Save program...
Ones at the high school, I believe we got a rebate, essentially. It comes off the price of it. So we don't pay full cost. National Grid gives us a rebate for energy savings.
Do we participate as a school system at all in Mass Save?
Well, we do, we do do projects with Mass Save. I know some of our EMS or energy management systems that we've been, we've been doing and doing on build, we do it through National Grid, that's tied into Mass Save as well.
Because we're talking about a $5 billion program that a lot of people are upset about because of the utility bills went through the roof.
Through the roof.
Yeah. And then we had, I think, only about a $15 million program to deal with green energy, and that would be municipality and the schools, like, you know, fighting for those resources. And I know the mayor has been focusing on the school front. It's just, to me, it's a shame that we have LED lights and all these things that we could upgrade, like windows, and we don't have the resources from the state on this. And then the only thing else, the metallic barriers that was recommended by Pest End, right? Have we covered all the schools with those metallic barriers, the exterior? Or is that still ongoing with the piecemeal?
The high school and the Marsh are pretty much all set. We had installed some at the Timony, and they were the wrong ones, they got eaten through. So those have now been replaced. We replaced all the ones at the Tenny as well. I do have to order some for, well, they've been ordered for the CGS, but at the CGS, I believe it's six doors. It's just the front and just the back door. But it's like a triple door, you know? So...
Are we, could we be certain by return of the kids in September that those metallic barriers will be placed across school system?
Yeah, you could probably have...
Because that was a major thing that was, in addition with the high-tech Pest End items, that was the things that were really repelling entry, along with pruning the trees and cleaning up the leaves and debris. So that was something to, because if it's wood or any rubber, they were eating through it. So it was like, I think the metallic was the best thing under the sun to be able to repel. So if we could have a follow-up report before the kids go back in September?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will, I will have those doors swept on by the end of April vacation.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member DeZoglio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a quick question over, are we planning on, because I saw the report, when do we plan on doing all the landscaping, especially with cutting the trees and cleaning up the leaves? Because I remember Willett said, that is a major problem when it comes to the mice, in the sense they stay in that area.
You're speaking specifically about the Timony?
Timony, Mr. Chair.
And the trees inside the courtyards?
Yes.
Yes. July, soon as we have a new budget and we can pay a tree company or come in and do it.
Also...
The hardest part is getting those trees out of there.
Yeah.
I don't know, who thought that was a good idea?
Also, do you remember, Vice Chair, the water damage under the sink? Is that the same one that was on the health inspection report? There was like a couple of, because I feel like the sink has been around with the water damage? Or is that a totally different sink?
No, it's the same one.
Which room is that, Ryan?
The one right here. That, I feel like that's, I feel like I've seen this before.
Does it say what room?
No, it just says picture 20. I just feel like this, this has been, been here on, like a picture wise before, or it's just a common thing, I don't know.
Well, it's common that where there's water, they'll end up leaking, and you'll get a little bit of dry and crusting. As long as it's not continuing to leak, it's not that much of an issue. We do try to cut those boards out and replace them with new ones. The Board of Health did look at a couple over at the Marsh, and they tested them for moisture and, you know, took a good look at them. And they said there's no moisture in them at this point at all. So they're not dangerous, they're not harboring anything, they're not, nothing's growing, but they just, they look nasty. They look dirty and cracked. So we're, we're trying to replace them as quick as we can. Just, we're trying to do a lot of stuff as quick as we can.
And one more, Mr. Chair. So another concern that I have was the dusted vents. Where, who is that custodians cleaning those? Or do we have a company coming in to clean those vents, making sure they're all filtering properly?
Are you talking about ceiling vents?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, when we had the deep clean, they came in and cleaned and vacuumed all those, those vents. I'm not sure exactly which vents you're speaking of, but those are all pretty deep cleaned during, during the deep clean of the Timony and the Marsh.
Yeah, the ones that...
We had them do just the vents and some of the return vents on the Marsh over Christmas.
So at the Marsh, at the Marsh, they focused on the vents?
Yeah.
Not the Timony.
Because from the Timony...
Yeah. It was not in the scope, I'm sorry, excuse me, it was not in the scope of their services at the Timony, however, they did the Marsh.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Oh, all right.
So the quick question I have is, who's cleaning them now?
We'll have the custodians dust them and vacuum.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just what I have to do a vacation week.
Okay.
Because we'll need more than just a second shift to do it.
Exactly. All right, all right, thank you.
So we'll hear from Member Donovan, then we'll follow up from Member Maxwell.
Okay, just very quickly, the one thing that really popped out on me, to me, is right on the executive summary that the pediatric asthma rate for the school is lower than the state rate. So I found that very reassuring. To follow, to follow up though, Mr. Goslin, taking that tree out of the school that is in the school out, and I hope we're all invited to see that. When not, did you say no?
I believe it's already gone.
Oh, it is gone? Okay. Oh, wow.
Thanks for bringing attention to it.
That's great.
Who puts a tree in a school?
We were sorry, we were like, who watered it?
It was a pretty solid tree.
It was absolute survival mode, but it has been removed.
It has been, okay, because the last time I was there, it was still... A tree grows in the Timony, it could be a title for a book. That said, okay, that's wonderful news, because it's cited in here. Is there a plan in place, and I know I always bring up the landscaping and what can we do together? Is there a plan in place to regularly do some of that landscaping around all of the schools? I mean, you hear about the ivy growing on one school. I mean, is, is there a schedule to do this on a regular basis?
Well, we have, we have a company that will come in and do a cleanup.
Yeah.
Clean up in the spring, clean up in the fall, mow, weed whack, blow the, blow the stuff away. I'm not sure if you're talking about, we also do have our custodians go and do mulch, buy the mulch, spread the mulch, you know, weed stuff usually right before school starts. I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, or is it something...
But it seems like it's more hardcore, significant pruning, removal of the ivy on the buildings, cutting back some of the trees, where we might need a tree service.
Maybe we could work with the mayor, who might have more resources for pruning.
Yeah, one of the things, and this is just an internal discussion, and we're actually early in these discussions, you know, we're trying to possibly rethink the way that we manage our municipal buildings, you know, on both the city side, and also seeing if there's opportunity to better assist on the school side as well. But from the perspective of the city, so, you know, we don't have a formal plan in place yet, but that's just an ongoing but early discussion, point of discussion that we're exploring in the building here.
Thank you. And just one more thing, this, this study is pretty interesting when you get into it, especially some of the things that are done in the classrooms. I'm sure there'll be education for the teachers. I mean, just the mention of the tennis balls the teachers put on the bottom of the chairs to kind of dull the noise. The air fresheners that were found, that could, could spark perhaps some respiratory issues. The rugs, I know we hate to bring up the, those beautiful rugs we bought a while ago, but I'm sure there'll be lots of conversations with staff about what works, what needs to be done and accommodate everybody. It's a great report. Thank you.
Member Maxwell.
I just had a follow-up question regarding the trees. I know when we toured one of the schools last year, we were told that for every tree that's removed, two more need to be planted. Is that something that can be exempt with schools? Like where, where are we going to put another tree? Can we just remove it and not replace it with two trees? I'm concerned. That's my first ask. And then my second question is regarding the vents and all of that. I know that when we toured the Timony, we had mentioned the vents back then, and it was a very long process for the custodians to clean out the vents, because the Marsh was done by a company. But when they're cleaned, they're also painted. So I want to make sure that we're cleaning all of them. I know that the head custodian that was at the Timony has since moved on to a different position within the district. She's maybe the head of HVAC, I don't know.
He's a maintenance, he's a maintenance.
You know, I just, I'm concerned with that because this report has been growing over the years, and it's all HVAC related. So now, you know, we have serious concerns with the HVAC and the ventilation and all of that at the Timony, and now I just don't want to see that pour over to the entire district. So that's all I have to say, just really, about the trees too, maybe.
Yeah, so that tree resolution that was written by former Council Fennecaro, I actually was on the council at the time and joined her as a co-sponsor. I don't think there are any exemptions built into that, but, you know, certainly we can look into what options may exist, especially since we're talking about, you know, broader pest-related issues. Member Shabili, do you have something to add?
So focusing first on the standard report, there are 13 bullets on here that are actually informative. The rest is a weekly email that tells me you did your job. And I invite anybody to disagree. We've talked about how we want to make this better and usable, but we, we haven't actually done anything with it yet. I would love to see this become something that's informative and not in a sense where, you know, attaboy, you did your work this week, but okay, this is what we as a school committee need to be focused on. This is what, you know, next time I talk to Representative Hamilton or one of his counterparts, this is what I'm going to bring up. This says they cleaned the bathrooms. Attaboy, good job. It, it's, it's, it's fluff. This is the stuff we see on the news about sending an email that you did a good, you did your job, and you get to come back next week. But as for the bullets that I flagged that were actually informative, there was one about a playground, the playground at the Marsh, and they're ballparking it, or you guys are ballparking it, about 230K. Would that be extraordinary maintenance? Do we have to budget for that?
That would be above extraordinary maintenance.
I thought it was 250.
Is it not? 150.
150? Hmm. So that's something we need to go.
That's a long-term plan, or find another funding source.
Because I know that you guys have all three of those running for what seems like almost three hours while the kids are at recess, during lunches and whatnot. So that was just a concern that I raised for myself. And then there was another one here that said there were 60 penetrations found in the roof of the high school.
Correct.
What caused 60 penetrations?
My gut. We can talk about ice, et cetera, et cetera, but we can also talk about shoveling the roofs in the past. Not a big fan of shoveling roofs.
No, you shove a rubber and you nick it.
That's why I'll always, I always leery about putting, putting panels on a roof, because then when we get four, four feet of snow on top of the panels, I always worry about that extra load. But I'd say it would be a gentle blend between weather and a massive crew of shovelers.
And then there's one at the Timony. Go ahead.
It was, it was the, it was things that I've learned, right? Because I don't, I learn a lot about different things in this position, but even with new leaks arriving, right, in different buildings, when we had some new leaks at the Marsh this spring, it was very clear, there was ice, melt ice. And even the roofer who we contract with said, I'm not going up there and chiseling ice, right, because I'm going to create more holes. So until it's gone, it's, it's this, like you kind of have to figure this out to let it all leave, right? Which causes us, right, I had to displace the classroom or two, and it just, those are struggles and, you know, it just adds to the, like the shoveling and the chipping. They won't go up there and shovel more because they're going to ruin more of the roof, right? So this season in particular, I think that the ice was more challenging. The freezing and the thawing of the ice caused some pretty, yeah, some pretty remarkable tears in...
Those seams to open, kind of.
Yeah.
All right. At the Timony, this one is flagged, apparently the state red-tagged the boiler, and it now can't be used until we replace it. We've already got two on the docket.
Not the whole boiler, I believe it's a, it's a piece of the boiler that needs to be fixed.
Between chamber one and two of boiler two.
So it needs to be braised or, or fixed. We're hoping we can fix it, or we may have to replace a part.
But it's not a full boiler replacement.
Correct, not a full boiler replacement, no.
All right. Transitioning to this wonderful packet, which, I mean, I was partnered up with Mr. Reeves, and we walked through this building just like you guys did, and it was, it was a lot. And I mean, to remember Maxwell's comment earlier that, you know, we're above on some of the, was it carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide? I don't remember which one it was. Most, I can tell you that 80 to 90% of the rooms we went into, the intake was blocked. So the air was not being sucked out, there was a little case shoved up against it. It was packed in front of with rubber-made bins, almost every single room. And some of the rooms that weren't blocked, the thing, the thing wasn't sucking, because apparently the fans were broken. I think that that requires a bit of a culture change. We, we need to be more aware of what we're stacking in front of these things. My big takeaway from this report was that we need to be better about how we handle the water damage after it occurs. I think historically, it's kind of been the lipstick on the pig. We just, you know, we dry it out, we paint it, we move on. But you don't know what's going on behind it. And to the point where this guy, the DPH guy made this point 4,000 times in the five hours we were with him. If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Anything that's gross and on a surface is instantly mold, whether it's mold or not. And that's the narrative that's going to be played out in the community. They saw the pictures from underneath these sinks, it's mold. DPH said it wasn't, but the community is going to say it's mold, and you're never going to tell them they're wrong.
Did they say it wasn't? Did we test it? They didn't say it wasn't, so don't, don't say they didn't say that. If it's dry, most of the...
They said that we didn't have...
They didn't test it.
You can't do it once.
Yeah, and most of the places that, like that with the sinks that we, because I was there that whole day too.
Yeah.
It was dry, right? So they have the relative humidity meter, and there's no water, so it can't live, right? So it looks awful.
Right.
It's dry. It was kind of what happened at the Marsh with the panel on the media center, like it's, it definitely wasn't good, didn't have a good life. It needs to be replaced, but again, it's what is our priority for, like, we're talking about a lot of things here. Everything that we've just said has dollar signs attached to it and time, right? So time, whether it's our own people time, or time versus contracted time, and there's dollar signs attached to that no matter what. So it is, it is a lengthy conversation about our priorities and how we do it, and if it's, you know...
Right.
An ugly sinkboard that is not problematic or wet is not going to be the priority, right? It's going to be, let's do the vents, let's do the things that the kids are sitting in, the rugs, let's get those rugs replaced, right? So that's, this is what makes this really challenging, is because we would all love to do all of it, but that's just not going to be, I think, in the cards. So we just have to figure out what those things are, what's going to happen over the vac, and again, then you have, certain things can happen when kids are in the building, and certain things cannot happen when kids are in the building. So do you save everything for the vacations, which are usually four weeks, four days, because there's always a holiday in our school vacations, right? So it's just, there's just lots of challenges to planning, but, you know, I know I've said it, nobody's ignoring any of these things. We're trying really hard to address all of it. It's a lot, right? And again, our priority was the mice, which is in, they're good now, not in the buildings[1794.65] And again, our priority was the mice, which is in, they're good now, not in the buildings as far as we know. So that has been successful. But you know, there is a lot of work to do outside the buildings. Inside, we recognize that. It's just the time, the space and the, like, to contract for folks to come and do bush removal and the ivy and the landscaping, that is not cheap in the size of the buildings we have with six school buildings. So again, it's, we can do it. People will do that for us. Again, it's just time and money that we have to kind of figure out how to balance those things. What are the most important things for us first, which are going to be the things that impact the humans? What do we do next, right? Because we want to fix the buildings and the sinks and the backboards that are just rotting and old because the buildings are old. So those are the conversations we have.
And my purpose of that is to keep it top of everybody's mind, we're about to have a conversation on Wednesday where undoubtedly our extraordinary maintenance is going to come up. And everything you just listed, mo-most of it, if not all of it, is going to come out of that bucket of money.
Much of it.
I know that we want to focus on CIP, which is amazing because the schools have been wholly neglected as far as CIP goes for forever. This, not for, for as long as I've been in the city, since 2015.
I can tell you in the last five years, we, we've gotten a lot more than we ever did prior to that. Um, you know, we have absolutely, I, I don't want to say that we, it's been neglected in the last five years anyways. We've got roofs that we've never had. We've got parking lots.
Roof did blow off. Hmm? Timony roof did, Penny roof did blow off.
But the CGS was replaced. I mean, there are, there are a lot of things in the past five years that have been successful. It's just when you have so many years previous to that, you know, we're eking on the lifespan of so many things right now. And that's where the lifespan of the roofs, of the boilers, of the chillers, right? They're all coming to an end. And, and you guys asked about like what our staff can do. We can fix some things and put the Band-Aids on the boilers to get them to stop leaking, but actually replacing and, and making it work consistently, you know, that's, that's the big stuff, right? That's the big stuff. So there's, there's that. There's a lot more to do, yes.
Member DeZoglio, follow up.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I'm hearing all this and I totally get the dollar signs and everything that, that's why I continue to advocate that maybe unless there's laws that I don't know about, that we need to partnership with trade schools, a Six Aggie, all them, and having them come in for, because I know those schools do things, like build houses and stuff like that. I don't know how it works for school districts, but I'm at the point where I'm like, if it's going to help kids earn their apprenticeship or ours and it's going to save us money at the same time of giving back to the community, this is a good opportunity of having those kids come in and start working on the schools that most of them went to. And I feel like they would put a lot of effort into it because they might have a brother, they might have a sister, nephew, or their mom works there or something. So they're going to have more, more investment when they're building and making sure everything is correct to that standards, having that. Now again, unless there's things that I don't know about that they can't do those things, we, we need to find a solution. I'm presenting unless someone has a better one. I think those are the avenues that we need to take to stop making sure these things get done. So that's just my thing.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair.
Member, um, why am I blanking? Shabilia kind of touched on what I wanted to say, but you know, we have a budget to do the maintenance in our buildings that we've always done, and we don't have a whole lot more going into this next budget cycle. So what are we going to do differently that we can afford? And like, we need a realistic picture of, you know, we've done all this maintenance this year to, you know, above and beyond what our budget had. Well, we can't do that next year because it wasn't in our budget this year. So it's definitely not going to be in our budget next year because we don't have the money. So what are we going to be doing differently realistically to, to maintain what we have now? Because what we were doing before wasn't maintaining what we have now. So how are we going to do that with no more money? You know, so like, I just, at some point, we need a realistic, you know, dose of reality of what can we actually do with the money that we have?
I'm going to continue to make those investments and inject those resources from the city. That's my plan.
I just, I can't understand the criticism for a monthly facilities report that gives people in the community an update about the Board of Health recommendations and follow-up on it. It gives updates on the community, the capital improvement plan. For instance, with the Marsh Boiler, I know there were parents that approached me about replacing the Marsh Boiler, and it's going to be done this year, and that's off the list. So beyond the scope of talking about cleaning bathrooms or installing light bulbs, if people went into the actual report, it's following up on Board of Health recommendations. It's following up on cabinet repair. It's talking about replacing the carpets. It's talking about replacing the boilers. It's talking about the, the Timony roof replacement on the other page here. The fiscal year 27 is going to cost $3.7 million. That's something that we'll advocate for and will, again, I'm not understanding the criticism of the monthly facilities report. It's an ongoing fluid process and we have to work with the administration and the city council, the extraordinary maintenance and the capital improvement plan. That's going to have to come a lot of that from the city side, and we have a commitment from the current mayor on that. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
I expected to answer that. We're not going to. All right. Um, I'll quickly wrap up. So as was referenced in the report, I had joined Assistant Superintendent Gosselin as well as folks on the Board of Health at visits to the Tenny, the CGS and the high school. The Tenny report is online and I'm sure we can include that as part of the next update in the facilities report. But for anyone who wants to check that out, it's at methuen.gov/schoolsafety, the latest report regarding the Tenny. The progress that was noted at the Tenny since the time when the inspectors came late last year, just before the holidays, and now is quite literally remarkable. So the work that's being done there has been great. We have to keep it up. That report, as I mentioned, is out now. The CGS, one thing that was interesting that came up then was the supervising principal, Ms. Poetti, mentioned to me that she's heard from parents who have asked her, you know, why hasn't the CGS been included in the deep cleans? And there's been some concern about that from parents. And the response to that, I know that she's provided to parents who have questioned, and I'll reiterate that here, the CGS in terms of basic cleanliness is where it needs to be, and it's been that way since the onset of these issues late last year. They frankly just haven't needed that type of assistance in terms of getting up to speed. And so that report, as well as the high school report, will be available shortly. The inspectors are working on finishing those up. So I wanted to just add some context to that. Next on the agenda, we're going to move on to old business and other pending matters. We have none. New business, we need a motion and a second to approve. Actually, I'm so sorry, excuse me, I skipped over the out-of-school suspensions and other disciplinary actions report. Do we have any questions regarding that? Member Maxwell?
Just a quick question on the out-of-school suspensions. There's a lower number at the Timony versus all of the other schools. And my question is, I know that we continuously say that like there's the, oh, someone help me, the program there that helps, yes. Is that why we're seeing such a low number of incidents of out-of-school suspension? Or is it just due to reporting differently because they have a different setup for behavioral issues or just curious on why that one's so low versus the other schools?
I would say without a doubt, a little bit, maybe 99.9% positive, that it's because of the risk program, because of the, the data that Mr. Reeves shared with us a few months back. I can certainly ask for sort of an update on where they are now, sort of a year-to-date. But it was really clear to me in what he presented to this committee and what our conversations were, that that risk coordinator spent most of the time, if not all of the time, at the upper school, preventing repeat incidences and building those relationships with kids that were counting for those multiple out-of-school suspensions. So they might've got an in-school suspension, they might've got a two hours, you're going to be down here to cool off. So we have that opportunity and they really have that program off the ground. So I do think that, again, I would confidently say that that is a huge piece of why the out-of-school suspensions at the Timony are lower than the other schools. And I would just add that the Tenny also has the risk coordinator, right? And so they're working through that. That risk coordinator, which we did present to you when we had that update, spent a little more time at the beginning of the year in crisis management with some of our younger students than getting that risk coordinator in the upper school, which now has transitioned since then. So it might look a little different, but intent is fully the same. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on. And under new business, we need a motion and a second to approve June 16, 2025 as the last day of school.
Second.
Motion from Member DeZoglio, second from Member Donovan. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have 6B on the agenda. We removed 6C, I think it was just a redundancy, but 6B, we have the approval of the 2025-2026 school year calendar. We need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Motion from the Vice Chair, seconds from Member Donovan. Discussion? Member Maxwell?
I was just going to try to explain something on here that's very different, and then you all can have the floor. So the one thing that is different here, and it is something that we were trying to take into consideration and has been a challenge in the schools that have voting, is that you'll see here September 16th is the primary election. That is the day we're looking, we're proposing here to have that be a day of professional development for our staff. And then the November election day will just be a day off for our, right? It's a day off for the kids already and our teachers. We have struggled with that over the years, especially when there are higher, you know, numbers of, of folks coming for the elections. Some of our schools, the kids get completely kicked out of the cafeteria for the day. There's, it just becomes, it becomes really challenging when there are kids in the building. So we didn't want to forget that with the school calendar. So we are proposing that that is a difference than what we've ever presented, but I felt it needed some explanation and understanding. And again, it, it's incredibly, it's civics that we need to have our buildings open for the, the voting, but it can be incredibly disrupting to the school day for students. And the doors are open, parents are nervous that the buildings are open and unlocked. The police are always great, but that is the change, that is a change. I've, we've never presented that before. And again, this has come up year after year as a potential, like, can we think about it? And although it's not at all of our school buildings, it's at half of them. And it's enough to, you know, warrant maybe a little bit of thought behind that. So it looks a little different and parents might be like, they were just in school, now they have a day off, right? So it might feel that way, but we're doing it somewhat purposely for our community so that it makes sense for everybody and people would know ahead of time. Everything else is pretty much what you would see by date and progress reports and report cards and parent conferences.
Member Maxwell?
So just looking over the calendar, I would, I don't know if I have to make a motion or if I can just make a suggestion, maybe on Labor Day, starting the Tuesday after Labor Day, rather than the week before, that would only extend the school year one day there. And then on December 22nd and coming back on January 5th, that that would give the full two weeks, which would also only extend the year three days if we did it that way. So we would be looking at, we would be looking at the, if we start after Labor Day and give those two days on the two weeks break, we would get out of school June 18th rather than the 15th.
So two things. It's contractual so that the, everybody comes back before Labor Day. That was something that we agreed to many years ago so that we wouldn't be in late June with snow days. But I did also forget to mention this year, if you would look, we are actually giving the kindergarten four days for screening and classless making. Typically, we've done three. Our kindergarten teachers are working with us on sort of a different process to screen and do the class list for kindergarten. So you'll see that here. And again, they don't, they don't have any of the regulations that the grades one through 12 have. So we're okay by doing the four days at the beginning of the year. We used to do, I think, four or five at the end of the year, previous. I know when I was at the CGS, the kindergarten would get out a week early. They would do screening, but we just don't have parents enrolling for kindergarten now in time to do any kind of screening and class lists at the end of June. So we're going to move that to September. So that, I apologize, that's also a change you might see here. But yes, so I mean, it's the, that one is a little bit more challenging, the Labor Day move.
I'm confused with the Labor Day move being contractual and having it be an issue because the first day of school on this suggested calendar would be Wednesday, August 27th, which would only put the kids in school August 27th and 28th. So that's only two days before Labor Day. So maybe the teachers could come in the 27th and the open houses could be the 28th, and then we could start school the 2nd. And then, you know, we didn't, we didn't talk about the 22nd. I mean, just to have the kids come into school on Monday, the 22nd of December, and then have two weeks off and then come, return for one more day when they return, it's just...
So those three, so remember to that June 19th is a holiday, so we would actually be looking at the last day.
June 18th to add three more days. June 19th is the holiday, so we're not talking about June 19th. June 18th would put us at our last day if we add.
Without snow days.
Right. We haven't had snow days in years.
I'm just saying.
I just, I would, I would hope that we can take that into consideration because that's a, I know that that's a huge feedback I get from parents, just after Labor Day and maybe given the full two weeks for Christmas break or, sorry, holiday break. I don't know the right words for that. I don't, I don't know what I'm supposed to do here. Am I supposed to make a motion or am I just supposed to make a friendly amendment? Like, I don't know how this works.
I would say at this point, I don't know how the before Labor Day is going to work because it's contractually for staff. They have to report before Labor Day and have those four days to work.
What four days are they working before Labor Day?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are part of their 182 days.
I mean, we did just talk about.
For Unit B and A and C.
Member Willet?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I understand where Member Maxwell is coming from. When I, when I grew up, and I think a lot of my colleagues, when they grew up, it was schools started after Labor Day. That was the tradition. I think, I don't know what the timeframe was, we started to go before Labor Day. I think New Hampshire might be the same process. Some communities, they might be after Labor Day, but I think most of the communities, they would go before Labor Day, have their Labor Day break and then return. So I think in terms of continuity, because people make long-term plans, I would be adverse to making any changes to the calendar. I think if you go back to when I grew up, it was like you had Labor Day weekend and then, oh my God, Charlie Brown and the whole gang has to go back to school. So that was the thing that, but it's the reverse now is people go to school a little bit before Labor Day, get acclimated, have their Labor Day weekend and then return back to school. And I think just in terms of continuity. And I think just in terms of continuity, I mean, I understand where she's coming from, but I just can't support that motion at that stage. Uh, thank you.
Vice Chair.
I have two issues, as I bring up every year, I do not agree with us giving Good Friday off. It is the only religious holiday that we give off. And if we're not going to give off the holidays for the Jewish people and the Muslim people and any other people, even the Eastern Orthodox Christians, we're only giving the Roman Christians their holiday. I find it offensive to everyone other than the Roman Christians. So I have a huge issue with Good Friday, I say it every year, it is what it is. My second thing is I would like to strongly recommend that the city move elections from the elementary schools and put them in the field house of the, of the high school so that we do not have to close school for elections. Because it makes no sense to have them in the elementary schools when we have an entire field house that we can just close gym for a day for the high school kids, which, okay, yes, there's a lot of kids, but you know what, the high school kids are a little more resilient and we can completely close that off. It has its own entrance, we would not have to close school for that. And it's a very large area, we could fit both buildings worth of elections into one space and not disrupt school. So I would like to strongly recommend that the city consider that and get the elections out of our elementary schools. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio.
And I know Member Keegan says this every year, I'm always the opposite of this and she knows this and I have respect for her. The majority of the community is Christians. We also give if Passover Jewish holidays, we, they have allowed, that is true, that is true. Majority of the town is, is mostly Christian. I can pull that poll any day of the week.
We're, we're going to have a discussion regarding the school calendar, let's not, let's not do that.
Fact. So it will always be, it will, to me, will always be Passover. Oh, and Good Friday, I understand Passover for the Jewish, I think we should, they also could take the day off as an excuse opposite along as everything else. So second thing is that was brought up, I actually agree with Member Maxwell with the December. I understand, Member Willett. I had two weeks off this year for, and it was awesome. I think that would also be beneficial for people going away, just having that one day back, just give them the two weeks. So I would support that motion for the December one, I understand Member Willett's position for Labor Day. And then the third thing with the elections, I feel like because the community is so used to the elementary schools, I feel like that would be absolute chaos for elections. But that's just my opinion, if the, if the rest of the committee feels differently, I would, I would, I would respect that, but I feel like it would be chaotic for changing. Yeah, well, city, well, if we.
Member Shabilia.
So I, I agree with Member Keegan and I know we had briefly discussed this during collective bargaining and it was brought to my attention that getting rid of that day as a day off would have rolling impacts. That being said, I, I understand the the sentiment, I, I would support at least evaluating it and getting it. I don't think we do it for this calendar year because I think it's, we've got enough going on right now. But if it's a conversation we could have looking towards the future, I think that's worthwhile. I do agree with Member Maxwell on the December break and adding in that Monday and Friday. I think the impact on the end of our school year versus the impact on having one Monday, nine days off and then one Friday, I can only imagine what teachers have to deal with. Right. Oh, I missed a green. I guess for me, the sentiment doesn't change, having that just be a vacation week and having those days tacked to the end. I think for me, as both a school community member and a parent who would have to be home those days and entertain children, I, I think the value is there. And I think that from both a planning perspective for parents and because I can only imagine what goes on in a classroom on those days because I can, it's got to be utter chaos, that it, it, it's something we should consider. I'd be curious to know, Dr. Kwong, from your perspective, what the impact of that would be on a broader scale? And then maybe even Member Donovan, as someone who has lived it oh so much. I'd be curious to know what you guys see there.
I, I would say that if the committee chooses to do the two full weeks at winter break, pushing it to June, it, it just becomes late, those, those weeks become challenging. And we don't have, just keep in mind, we do not have AC in all buildings. So the shorter amount of time that we're in buildings that we get into the summer can also be trying. The CGS does not have AC in their class, all their classrooms, right? So that can be challenging. And then if there is snow days, we're just going into the last week of June. I mean, that's the implication, it's just going into the last week, knowing that we absolutely could go into the last week of June if there's one snowstorm, few snow days, it's in there, it's built in the calendar, but it can happen.
Well, Member Donovan, the vice chair.
I just have a question for Dr. Kwong, you mentioned earlier, can, we have some contractual obligations. Could you please explain that to all of us one more time?
With the before Labor Day?
Yeah.
So the, the teachers unit and the program assisting unit has language in their contract that they start before Labor Day so that there's always consistency to when we start school. The language used to be depending on the date of Labor Day is when we would start. So if the date was like September one, two, three, we would start after Labor Day. If it was four, five, six or later, we would start, it was a little, it was just hard for planning. I don't remember exactly when that changed. That changed before me becoming superintendent, I believe, the, the before Labor Day so that everybody could plan, parents knew, teachers knew, we knew we were coming back the Tuesday before Labor Day and a lot of it had to do with, there were a few years in a row that were really challenging with the weather and pushing us far into June, that a lot of districts around here did the same thing. Again, I don't remember the year, but probably a good eight to ten years ago that we made that switch to just make it consistent.
And if I remember correctly, a lot of families, this is, it's a no win. I mean, if we, if we could forecast the weather, we'd all be rich, but a lot of families start planning their vacations second, I mean, third week in June, so we'll never know. I do, I do, I'm thrilled that we will not have people in our building on election days. I think that is a huge safety concern, it's a terrible stressor for the teachers and the kids who have to eat those bag lunches because they can't access the cafeteria. So I would hope though, I think your idea is fabulous, is there any way? So we wouldn't interrupt learning, perhaps some sort of task force, I know we love a good task force, but maybe some investigation with our clerk, I don't know if there's enough room, but I think it's a great idea for, not this year, obviously, but down the road. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have one more implication, just so that everybody's aware. If, if the two weeks happen, I would have to move the high school grad, the, the calendar would have to be adjusted in June. I'd just have to adjust the calendar in June a little bit. The high school graduation would have to get moved to what it says here. It would have to be moved back.
Vice Chair.
I have another question, if we were to do that, would that also mean that the Friday before would have to be a half day based on the contract? Is that correct? The half day before a vacation, so would we have to make that Friday a half day?
Uh, I believe so. You mean the last day of school?
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the Friday before, yeah, the before vacation would have to be a half day. So we wouldn't even.
Because it's Christmas, it's the, it's the half day before the Christmas vacation and it's the half day before Thanksgiving.
Correct, so, so we'd have to have a half day on that day. And also, it would bring us to the eighteenth of June. If we had one snow day, we would end up having to go to the twentieth because the nineteenth is the holiday.
If we were to go, let's just, we're just talking about the winter break right now, right? If we focus on the winter break, we'd be adding two days to this calendar. So last, I'd have to just shift this over so the last day would be the seventeenth. So if we were to have snow days, it would be the eighteenth. And yes, you're right, the nineteenth, the schools would be closed. We'd have to come back the twen, whatever those five days I'd have to play with after that. But that shift for the, the winter break would bring us to the seventeenth. And the high school graduation, I would have to move it and you might even be looking at like a Wednesday graduation instead of a Friday. I'd have to move the graduation.
Yep.
If, if, if the committee chose not to do the twenty-second and twenty-third, oh no, actually, it's only one day. Never mind, it would be the sixteenth because the twenty-three is already in there as a half day. So it's really adding one day to the calendar if you want to make the, the winter break two weeks. Which I will say, and I think we debated this a little bit last year, a lot of the districts debated it. I think I knew then what everybody chose, I unfortunately didn't ask my colleagues, is, is, do you know, are you guys doing the two weeks again in Lawrence? So I think Andover, North Andover did not, they did what we did last year, I think Lawrence did the two. It just depends on what the school districts want for those two. This is like the two or three years in a row that it could happen this way, that there's not too many days on one end or the other that you could add or delete the two days on the end. So I'm sorry, Member Maxwell's right, you're just, we're just adding one full day. So it would be Tuesday, the sixteenth would be the last day if you wanted to do two weeks.
So do we have a motion to amend the calendar?
I'd like to motion to amend the calendar.
Can you specify?
By taking.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it is two days.
It is two days.
I'm so sorry, it's Monday and Tuesday. Yeah, so if you take away, I'm so sorry, if you take away Monday and Tuesday, you have to add the two days. So it would be sixteen, seventeen would be a half day. So, sorry, thank you.
Motion would be to add the twenty-second and twenty-third to vacation and the last day of school would be June seventeenth.
Yes, sir, a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to amend the calendar, second from Member DeZoglio. Other discussion, Member Shabilia.
I like the idea, I just wish we had some time to hear from the community, from the people we talked to as to what their opinion is on it. I, I want to vote yes because quite frankly and personally, it improves my Christmas break. But I don't know how the people at large feel about it. Because I know when you have kids home, people have to worry about childcare and a million other things.
So here, can I share, just to guide the discussion, we have a long agenda. So, you know, perhaps, I know we're discussing the proposed amendment, the, I was going to say the council, the committee could vote on the amendment and we could always proceed to table the actual calendar pending further discussion, I don't think we're necessarily in a rush to get this done. So that's an option, I'm just trying to move the meeting along. So, Vice Chair, do you have something to add?
My only concern is for the special needs kids. The consistency, having two full weeks off of services, especially for your sub-separate kids, is a huge issue. The other issue is, is that the kids who depend on us for lunches are low-income families, which is more than fifty percent of our district, some of our kids, these are the only meals they get, you know, during the day. So we're giving them two full weeks of no lunches. It, no, it's going to be two full weeks now instead of a broken up, we'd have stuff in that week. So those are issues that are real and I just want to throw them out there to be considered.
So at this point, we'll vote on the proposed amendment and then we'll return back to the main motion. All of us in favor of the amendment? Yeah, roll call, that'd be good.
Member DeZoglio.
Yes.
Member Donovan. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Member Keegan.
No.
Member Maxwell.
Yes.
Member Shabilia. Member Willett.
No.
Mayor Borghardt.
Yes. So the amendment is approved, I would recommend at this point a motion to table.
Yeah, motion to table.
Motion from Member Shabilia, the second is from Member DeZoglio, all those in favor of the table?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so we can continue this discussion at the next meeting. We need a motion and a second now to ratify the Unit A CBA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabilia, second from the vice chair, discussion? Member DeZoglio.
Obviously support this, but the quick question is, I want just people talking in the community, can you give a percentage or the amount that this contract is going to increase the budget of this year? Like, I already have it.
The financial impact?
Yeah, the financial impact that it's going to have on the budget.
Yep, so we did a four-year, we did a one-year and a three-year contract and the, for Unit A and the, the first year, which is this current year, we're in twenty-four, twenty-five.
The first year that we end twenty-four, twenty-five is, was a two percent, one percent split. And then for the three years, it was a three, three point two five, three percent. The, yes, that's the only one we're talking about right now, right?
Any other discussion? Member Shabilia.
Was there a fiscal impact done by, like, I know usually the CFO doesn't for the council.
So Colleen McCarthy had sent along to the committee a breakdown on an annual basis of the financial impact. Would you be able to read that into the record year by year?
I know we discussed it ad nauseam.
Yes, and, and also please know that along the whole way that we did this and this particular sheet that the mayor is referencing was done and spoken to with the CFO and the mayor.
Yeah.
The whole time.
I, I am very much aware I was in.
To make sure that we had the right numbers. Yeah.
Collective bargaining meeting, but I think it's worthwhile to have out loud.
It's just going to take me a minute to find the actual document.
We'll return to that, just to keep the conversation moving, Member Maxwell and then we'll return to Superintendent.
I would like to say that I am going to support this. However, I had some reservations. I think, I think our teachers do a lot. I think, I think that we, I think they deserve more, but I also think that adding time maybe to the beginning, I know that wasn't talked about this cycle, but maybe to the next cycle, we can kind of bring up to teachers, bring him back fifteen minutes before school and after school, just to give a little bit more time for kids that need the extra help or maybe playing in the playground before school again or parent drop off, you get to walk your kids to school again. I'd like to see that and I'd also like to see more extracurricular activities offered in their contract to kind of inspire them to want to do that and do the after-school programs. I know our neighboring districts have, I know one of our neighboring districts has twenty-seven after-school enrichment programs and we are struggling to come up with one. So if we could consider that maybe for the next contract cycle, I'd like that. Other than that, I will support it because the teachers are happy with it.
I'll return to the superintendent. Okay, any other discussion? Vice Chair.
I just want to point out that, I mean, I'm definitely supporting this contract and I want to point out that even though we're in a very tight budget situation, it is not because of the contract. And I just want to make that very clear to people that this contract has nothing to do with our budget crisis. Our budget crisis exists because of state funding and the teachers deserve what we're offering them.
Able to find it? So here's the deal. So here's the deal, I'm gonna break my cell phone rule, I'm taking out my city phone.
Yeah, Ms. McCarthy's trying to find it for me.
And I'm gonna forward, I have the, the message.
So worst-case scenario, we could do this Wednesday.
If we don't have it available now, for, just to read into the record, we can do this, we can certainly do it on Wednesday. However, here's the thing though, we would have to have it added to the agenda for Wednesday. So we'd have to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, it could be just a question I asked during the budget.
I can add it to the agenda and we just do it first.
It doesn't change my vote, so it doesn't put information alone.
Put information, it wouldn't, that wouldn't need to be added to the agenda because it is considered budget-related?
No, has to be added to the agenda.
Okay.
I have the email, I saw it today, but I'm trying to find it myself. Anyway, what we could do is, we could simply, just a sec, okay, we could simply, we have it on for discussion now, we could move to simply, we have to do something at this point as it relates to parliamentary procedure, we could table it for Wednesday, we have to do something, it's on the agenda right now.
I'm good voting.
We, that'd be, if, if, if it pleases the committee, that's fine.
And if I, if I do, if I do get it in the, while we're still here tonight.
We'll state it into the record, that's fine.
We'll state it into the record this evening, I'm just looking for it right now.
I will state publicly that I received that message, I'm trying to find it on my city email on the fly, but we do have that information, we'll read it into the record as we are able to share the specific numbers, very specific data year by year, so we want to get it right just for the public disclosure. Alrighty, so at that point, any, any other discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote, roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Chabilla?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Uh, next is the ratification of the Unit C CBA, we need a motion in a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Chabilla, second from the Vice Chair, discussion.
So I'll do the same thing that Member DeZoglio asked, alright, so this contract was done very differently than Unit A in the sense of there's not just a COLA added, it was a wage adjustment each year. So it's also a four-year contract, 24, 25 is a one-year, and then we have a three-year to follow. This was a wage adjustment long overdue, I think, that we would all agree with for our program assistance. It's not the highest in the area and we're not the lowest anymore in the area, which is really, we don't want to be that. We're really hoping that this contract will attract people to these jobs and we won't have all of these openings, is really what we are hoping for. And at the end of the four years, it puts us in a much more competitive spot to continue going forward. And that's on the same sheet that we're looking for.
Member Maxwell?
Um, I just have a quick question. On number two, it says no program assistant will be assigned duties without current appropriate training certification. Is that not the case now? Is, are all of our, I guess my question is, is do we have some PAs that are not appropriately trained and certified?
No, I'm not, I'm trying to, I know, I don't have it in front of me. What page are you looking at?
Just the first page, number two. Yep. And then also in that, it says that there's, there are side letters attached to the MOU, I just don't know what those look like.
So.
Those aren't attached.
Previously existing side letters.
Okay.
That predates us.
Then, okay. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
I honestly would have to look in my notes on that exact language.
Okay. I was just curious.
What was the second thing you asked?
Um, actually, Dan answered it, I just asked about, it says that in this MOU will be attached side letters. But he answered me, so.
Told me they were existing prior and they're just reincorporated by reference.
Right, some of that is housekeeping that we have to write that way, that they, there were side letters that talked about certain days, things like that, that were part of the existing three-year contract, we just have to get them into the language of the new contract.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Nope.
Other discussion regarding Unit C? Member Willett?
I just wanted to emphasize what the Vice Chair had indicated. Our actions tonight are not reflected in a budget that will be out of balance. The out of balance due to the budget will be because of state funding and going from $8 million a few years ago at the zenith, down to $2.4 million in Chapter 70 dollars. We still have an obligation to work with our respective unions. If anybody did a look-back period of 10 years, there were a lot of zeros and ones and twos. And again, what the Superintendent emphasized is that we need to get at least the middle part of parity for the paraprofessionals because we're gonna be losing these individuals. And their poverty wages right now for the paraprofessionals, even community college professors are poverty wages. So it's not something that we worked in concert and with Maggie and yourself, our actions tonight are not going to bust the budget. What will bust the budget is that we're not receiving sufficient Chapter 70 monies. And that's something that I'm glad the Vice Chair brought it up. I also want to give credit to all the members of the school committee that served on negotiating teams, that did countless hours of working. Some of them, they received backlash in the community that was unwarranted, I, I, I'm sorry about that. They worked through evenings and weekends and countless hours of meetings in order to what I perceive is a very reasonable package as compared to other communities. So I don't want to have that, anybody come back to me and say, by the way, the reason why we have a out-of-balance budget is because of the union contracts that we approved tonight. That is far from the case. I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Willett. Anyone else wish to discuss? Okay, last thing I'll, I'll mention, regarding the model of cost that the committee received, it'd be good if we posted that online as well, just for the sake of transparency. Anything else, all right, we'll take a roll call vote.
I found it, do you want to take a roll call vote and then I'll?
Actually, no, we're in the midst of discussion, let's read it into the record.
Okay, so we're reading into FY '26, 3%? How do you want me to read this?
Uh, percentages and dollar amounts.
So, um, oh wait, hold on. So close, I think I have the right sheet, I just made sure I have the right, nervous to say the numbers. So that's not it. Hold on.
I just want to reiterate to anyone who's watching, the committee has received this information and we have the comfort level to take the vote. This is, will, will be disclosed online and we'll read it as the Superintendent receives it, so we can take the vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Happily, yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Chabilla?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We need a motion in a second to approve the Crest Collaborative Articles of Agreement amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Chabilla, second from the Vice Chair. Discussion.
So I, I'll just, this is a matter of formality, so the board, the 16-member board already voted to approve the amendments to this. So by function of each school superintendent who sits on the board has to bring this to their school committee to also vote by April 30th. Then the Crest Director has to give that to the state to say that he's done all of those pieces on the board, plus each individual school committee has seen it. So again, a little bit more of a, our group has looked at it with a fine-tooth comb and has approved this, these changes. Just so you want, it's, and we haven't done this in my tenure, so this is the first time these have been actually amended in a while.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Need a motion in a second to approve the Ranger Club increases for the school, for upcoming school year, 25, 26 and summer 2025.
Some of.
Motion from the Vice Chair, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Member Chabilla, discussion. Member Chabilla?
Are these cost-neutral programs at these rates?
Yes, so what we're hoping for is, right now, it is going to be challenging to compete with the rates that we are approving. Um, so, and we have not increased the cost on an annual basis for Ranger Summer Camp or Ranger Club during the school year. So to keep up with the cost for staffing, this is what we're proposing at this point, is the 10%. Didn't answer your question, but yes, this will allow us to stay in the black.
So is there, is there revenue generated from this somewhere or is it?
Yes, so the revolving account, the community programs is a revolving account, so they, they are self-sustaining, I'm sorry, is that what you're asking? So there is, yes, the Ranger program is not part of our operating budget, they are self-sustaining with the tuitions, pays for all of their staffing, all of the supplies. I think one of the thing, and Jennifer's apologized, apologized she couldn't come tonight to answer questions, so I hope I can answer the questions you have. But one of the things that they have noticed has, has dipped into their accounts more than they anticipated was the cost of supplies. And I think we could all understand that over the past two years, they do a lot of consumable supplies, they do a lot of, you know, they actually purchase snacks and things for their kids. So those costs are also rising and again, we haven't increased the cost. And you can see, we're still, our hope is to still keep this at a reasonable cost compared to, you know, somebody going to a private after-school care or something in their own school, they don't have to be transported somewhere and can be picked up at those two different times.
I can say from personal experience, because both of my kids are in the extended Rangers Day at the mark, it's a phenomenal program and there is not a single opportunity out there that you're gonna get at this cost. And they do arts and crafts, they do all sorts of things, and they come home happy every day, and we've done Rangers Camp, we've done for, for February Vacation, we're looking at it again, for summer vaca, like, it's phenomenal and you're not gonna beat it and they love it. My only complaint, and Carol will tell you, we need to be able to get that website to auto-run those charges every month. Because no matter how many times I change that email from not spam, it goes to spam and I don't remember to log in and make the payment.
Gotcha.
Even though my credit card's in the system. And I know I'm not the only one, because she told me she is always chasing people down, so.
Note taken.
It's, it's a phenomenal program and I think that people who need it are not gonna find a better option elsewhere.
Member Maxwell?
Um, so I agree with Dan, this, the pricing on this is just, you're not gonna find it anywhere else. My only question is, I know in, I know in the contracts, it says that we do allow our staff to bring our, their kids to our schools. If they're coming to the before and after schools, we're giving them, we're also giving them a discount staff for that. My concern with that is that it, you know, we, in, in the contracts, it says we will take on the child as long as there are no additional costs. And I'm just confused as to why we would give a discount when it's an optional program one and two, it's, it is an additional cost. Whatever we're giving for a discount could be used towards those extra supplies, those extra snacks.
It's completely contractual, so if there are staff in Methuen Public Schools and their children are in the program, it would be the discount. So I can also say to you, we don't have a whole lot of staff that do not live in Methuen that bring their kids to school and have them in Ranger Camp. I could probably get you a number and I could probably count on two hands if, if that, in the entire district. We don't have a ton of, of staff that live outside of, we have them and we want to keep them, so we want to say yes to them being able to bring their students. But not many of them are, number one, younger and number two, in the Ranger Camp. I could actually get a list if you were, if you would like.
So if, my, I guess my only question is, is if they're bringing their child to school and bringing them to the before-school program, they get, oh. So they, they would get a discount because obviously they can't have their child sitting in their room with them.
Correct.
Okay.
Same with the after-school.
So there's really no option other than?
Right, if their child is in upper school, then they can't have kids coming to their...
I gotcha.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent, I'll invite you to begin the discussion regarding the strategy plan quarterly review.
Yeah. So we are going to share with you, and we do apologize that it's tonight, but we had such a long budget meeting the last time, we didn't want to have both of these things on the same night. Um, so, and we didn't want to get too far behind in our quarterly reporting, because then it just won't mean as much in between the report outs. So we do have the quarter three report out for you tonight, you have all the slides in your packet. We will have Dr. Galavsky get set up. We'll have her get set up. Yeah. It did work remotely last time, it was wonderful in here, but somehow that's not working tonight. Rose will help us. I'll turn it right over to Dr. Galavsky.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm starting with just an overview of our strategy for District Improvement Plan with the three main objectives, which should be pretty familiar at this point. The first, to accelerate literacy development and language acquisition across all subject areas. The second, to reduce opportunity and achievement gaps between student groups to improve outcomes. And the third, to enhance partnerships with students and families for the purpose of increasing connectivity, engagement and belonging. So to remind you of our priorities, for Objective One, we're focused on building a culture of accountability for all leaders and educators to uphold our vision of literacy instruction and language development, to support teachers in delivering standards-aligned instruction, and then utilizing our screening and progress monitoring to track student growth and adjust instruction, and to ensure high-quality core instructional materials are used effectively. So in the first two quarters, I shared on some different topics. So in the first two quarters, I shared on some different topics. And again, this is not all-encompassing of all of our efforts, just choosing to highlight a few of the actions that have been taken. And at this point, the scores you're going to hear about were the result of testing that occurred in January, because as Dr. Kwong mentioned, we're a little behind in this quarterly report. So soon you'll hear from our quarter four report, which will have more recent scores to go through. But I'm going to talk about those scores and also the results of our Learning Acceleration Network walkthrough data. And finally, inform you and update you on our K through four ELA pilot, which is exciting. So since our fall benchmark scores, I just included this information to give you a little bit of an insight into what's been going on in the world of K four ELA and likewise 5-8 ELA. And these are just some of the highlights that the Humanities Supervisors asked me to convey, in that they're, they're really focused on using multiple data points. So what I'm sharing with you is just the single screener data point, but we're also considering a host of other assessments to garner understanding of the student. And we're really thinking about how we're strategically using small-group instruction and aligning that data with that instruction. Progress monitoring, I've had the opportunity to look at the supervisor's spreadsheets, which are pretty intricate and color-coded, and I was pretty impressed with the handle they had on each student and their needs. Also regularly checking in on the monitoring data, providing support and feedback, and using CP time, which is the time with teachers during the school day, that administrators have to engage in data protocols, or discuss progress, or to review instructional expectations. And then five through eight, again, the fall benchmark was, it feels like, light-years ago. Since then, they received their analysis of MCAS data and laid it against their screener scores, created intervention plans. CGS in particular has been really focused on this. This is an idea of Principal Prieti of looking at those students who are at the cusp of meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS and really targeting that group. So we're using that data to see if her efforts garnered the results that she hopes, and then we could extend it throughout the district. Ongoing TSS for students well below grade level, and those that don't appear to be making progress. And finally, looking at the use of WIN for reading and writing reinforcement. So this slide shows the scores from fall, and these would be the percentage of students reading at or above grade level, or being at or above grade level. And I will point out that, as a reminder, we don't test the kindergarten students until November. We give them a little bit of time to get used to doing school. And then the winter scores, those are all from January. So that's the aggregate across the district, grade by grade. And then I prepared this slide, which I thought it might be interesting for you to see by cohort, meaning this is the same group of students, how they tested last winter or last January against how they tested this January. And so again, there's a few differences there. One being at grade level in the year prior is far different than being at grade level in the subsequent year. That's one. But I also pointed out, and I marked them by class, so the class of 2033, which would be current grade four students, last year, that score would have reflected their score in DIBELS. And this year, their score is reflected on the Dreambox Insight Assessment, because that's the year where we switch. So it's not a perfect parody, but it's to give you an idea. And so I was, I was happy to see the growth by cohort in terms of the number of students, a percentage of students, reading at or above grade level. I also remarked in the notes there that the class of 2033 and 2032, Desi has communicated to us as well, those are groups that are slightly lower than others, because they were in kindergarten and grade one at the onset of the pandemic. So we're still recovering a little bit there, and lots of focus on trying to accelerate that growth. And this slide here shows comparison from last winter to this winter by grade. So different students, but how did the grade three, for instance, students last year compare to the grade three students this year? So on the whole, we see some growth. Grade two was actually strangely similar from last year to this year, and then four, a very slight dip. But I think kindergarten was particularly impressive in terms of the growth. And then in case you were curious, I broke down by school, and these would just be the winter benchmarks scores. So that would be the January scores. So this is kinder through grade four. And I could say on this slide and on the following slide, which is five through eight, there are some cells that stand out. And usually, there's a story there. And I'm finding that some of those stories pertain to the way the test was potentially administered. So maybe some variation, because the administrator was different from the fall to the winter. So we're looking at the Amplify System. DIBELS has another product that takes some of that human element out of it. And so we would be able to rely on the scores a little bit more there. We're looking into that. And also, I wanted to point out that particularly students in grade four at that switch from DIBELS to Dreambox Insight, if they test below grade level, the supervisors retest them with the DIBELS to see if they're finding the same outcome. And it varies from school to school. But for instance, grade four at the Marsh, I know when Jen Connolly, who's a supervisor there, retested students with DIBELS, 12% were shown to be at or above using that assessment. So it could have been a lack of familiarity with the assessment as well. And here's the five through eight scores. There are also some cells that stand out in a positive way. And I just wanted to point out, too, in the prior quarterly, or I think it was the first of the year, actually, I mentioned this strange finding that there were quite a few students who were flagged by Dreambox for one of the items that's bulleted there. So receiving a score that was four levels lower than their previous one, or a score as .5 higher than 2.0 on their previous, or below .5, which is below kindergarten. And so in talking with Dreambox Reading Plus, they said that they're flagging those students because something went wrong. Perhaps it was an effort or clicking through at a different rate. And we found that in the winter benchmark, there were substantially fewer that had done that. So again, with the exception of grade four, students new to the assessment, more, more students gave it, it appears to be a solid effort, or an effort. So we're proud of that. So since those winter scores came out in January, which was a while ago, here are some things that have been done. And again, these were just aspects that certain schools asked me to highlight, not that there's not much more beyond this. But the Marsh in grade two, increasing time and text, regrouping the reading intervention blocks, reading success. You can see in grade three, there are some particular skills that were targeted, because there were some themes there across the grade. And then in CGS, the progress monitoring data is really important. We're finding that teachers that progress monitor or track with foundations integrity and their progress through those are having greater success in their literacy scores. So we're really following up on that. There are some teachers in grade levels across the district who, instead of switching for reading enhancement and taking a group that's all focused on one skill, wanted to give it a shot, keeping the homeroom in front of them and using small group. And we found that to be very successful in the grade levels at the tenny that tried that. And the same thing in, in K and one. Their teachers primarily keep students and really focus on small-group instruction. We're using UFLY as a, an intervention. So there's lots going on there. And in five through eight, we're finding that we need to focus a little bit on the pacing of the EL education curriculum to make sure students are getting to all standards. We've continued with the LAN walkthroughs, which I'll tell you about in a moment, the ongoing TSS process, and WIN Block as well. So I'll pause after Objective One is done, in case there's remarks there. I just have a couple more items. Unless, would you like me to pause now? I see some hands.
We can stop now for some questions. Well, Member Shabelia, then Member Maxwell.
So where does Lexia fit into all this? Because that's a reading program too, right?
Sure. Yep. It's a supplementary program, and there's a couple different versions of Lexia. So originally, Lexia, we used the rapid test for assessment. Prior to DIBELS from Lexia, we used kind of the whole wheelhouse. So now there's a couple programs to support, mostly K four and some foundational skills and the upper grades, but that would be similar to also the Reading Plus lessons that are available to students, a tool that they can use to hone their skills. So I see that used in the WIN Block. I see that used at home, sometimes in Reading Success too. But I'd say by and large, people are generally fans of Lexia. Some of the ELA programs that we're piloting, that I'll talk to in a bit, have versions of Lexia that also come with it, but it's a supplement to help with reading instruction.
So I know from experience that when you go in for the parent-teacher conferences, the scores that they're showing us, I don't know what other folks have experienced, is the Lexia scores for reading.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I guess, how does that score rating compare to DIBELS and Dreambox?
They're probably showing you that because it's more recent than when the screening data occurred. So that could be considered in some ways a progress monitoring step for them to see, or another data point even to cross. So outside of the screeners, there's no other assessments through the Dreambox Insight unless the student logs on and does the lessons on their own. Then there are some questions that come up. And then the same thing with our other tools, but we're really looking at everything. So the Lexia is a good indicator. I know there's different levels, and some students get really motivated to, to get that next printout or certificate. And so, yeah, I've seen students sit down and, and move through that and then go on to the subsequent program.
Lexia stuff gets cutthroat. They take that serious.
Yeah, it's pretty ser, and some teachers do a great job celebrating that. I've seen teachers hand out the certificates and everyone's clapping, or hang them on the wall, and so it's motivational, too.
So just a few questions. In the first slide for Benchmark One, it says that grades five through eight, they were created an intervention plan for students on the cusp of grade level proficiency. What about the kids that are not at or near grade level? Is there, is there an intervention plan for them?
Right. So, so certainly for students that are brought up to TSS, for the students who haven't been making progress, there's the whole MTSS process for that. And then we also know who the students are who are flying far above grade level. And so the, the cusp students are the ones that just need that little push. It might not require a very long intervention. Maybe it's just a certain skill. So sometimes, I'm thinking about a couple students, I was looking at, that they seem to get every type of question wrong. So it might not, in a certain area, so it's not pervasive across all the tests. It's just one little skill that needs to be fixed. And so that's a whole thing the CGS is doing to try to get people above that threshold. But certainly, every student we're tracking and monitoring, that was just one new, new initiative I want to highlight from CGS.
And then last year, when we had this data shared, it was separated by school grade, EL, non-EL, and another one for students with disabilities. We were also provided the MCAS student growth, and none of that is in here. I also asked at the last meeting if there was an update on why the scores differentiated so much between the timney versus the rest of the district. And, you know, we haven't got an answer on that.
Yeah, I actually, I remember you asking, and I, so I pulled up the slides to, to create the rationale. And what I was actually excited to see was that the timney in most grades I have on the, the screen now, five through eight.
But this isn't separated by EL, non-EL. So out of 986 students last year, 51% were not at grade level. We can't do that with this chart here, because you didn't separate by EL, students with disabilities. You didn't separate it out.
So you would like those groups excluded? Is that where you're looking?
Not excluded, just separated, like you did last year, so that we can have a comparison.
I'm happy to do that. And I think that would actually fit better under Objective Two as well, when we're talking about students with disabilities and English learners. So I think that would probably be, make sense for the quarter four update.
I just know that last year it was included in this quarter. I mean, so I would just like to maybe keep the evaluations that we're looking at, or the scoring, or the percentages, or whatever we're grading our, or, I mean, whatever we're looking at to monitor their benchmarks. I'd like it to look relatively the same year by year, so that we can go back. My other concern is the DIBELS assessment. I know that K through four is still getting the DIBELS and the Dreambox, is that right?
Four, grade four, if they're, if they're scoring below grade level on the Insight, then the DIBELS.
So I guess my concern with that is the Dreambox or the Insight goes down to kindergarten. So we realistically could use that district-wide. The problem I have with the DIBELS is that DIBELS administrators are supposed to be trained in DIBELS, and the evaluation of DIBELS, and all of the teachers are doing that by hand now. So they are testing 24 students in their class, and they are going through a DIBELS assessment. I'm assuming that's time-consuming. I mean, 24 students going through a DIBELS assessment, it's got to be at least 10 minutes each student.
Yeah, the, the time-consuming part doesn't come with the assessment. It's the manual logging of the different scores and coming up with the overall scores, which is why we'd be interested in having that.
Computerized.
Next level. But I will just point out, too, although we do give the DIBELS to students that are below grade level in Dreambox, I didn't include that here.
Right.
So what you're seeing is just the Dreambox.
Yeah. And then I, I would just be really interested to see the Dreambox assessment results themselves, because they do this for you. You can separate it by school, by grade, you can do it by year, you can group five years together. I mean, all of the statistics are done for you, so I just don't know where these statistics are coming from.
I just take them off the screen and put it in here, so it's neat. Because the DIBELS, I, if you want me to prepare it differently, but I thought it was the will of the committee to have it the same every quarter, which is why I just kept it similar.
The DIBELS is concerning to me, because all of the teachers have to be trained in that. It is, it is a trained program.
Yeah, we, we did train the teachers.
Every teacher in our district is trained in DIBELS assessments.
I'm sorry?
Every teacher in our district, K through four, is trained in DIBELS assessment.
Yes, the Humanities Supervisors trained, the teachers at the onset of the DIBELS. Because if you remember, we had to change midstream from the rapid assessment to DIBELS. So that was part of the whole training. And there is training available for teachers, too.
I know there's a training process. There is a training process for DIBELS, and it requires certain credentials and certain.
Yes, yes, we work.
So all of our teachers are certified.
Amplify is the company that produces DIBELS. And so we work, I can show you the, the invoice for the training module, if you need to see that. They were trained. And then we also use what they call, as the fancier version of a spreadsheet, we have the most basic version of storing the data. And so a lot of districts have moved on to that, the one that's more computerized and less prone to human error, which is, of course, more costly. So much to the case that Amplify might do away with the version we have and move to the other.
I'd like to see that.
For that reason, too, with teachers coming in and out.
I think that we're putting a lot on our teachers with the DIBELS assessment, especially just having to monitor them and input the results. I think if we can computerize them, I think that would be.
Yeah. Well, of course, too. And then the next echelon of that program, for, again, another additional cost, will tell you, will group the students for you. So that's something the Supervisors are doing by hand, which takes a ton of time. Will group students, but then also tell the teacher how, what best to do with those students to help them grow. to help them grow. So there's lots of options that we're pricing out, but I think we're in the same vein in terms of how we think could be a little bit smoother a process and focus on instruction instead of testing.
I just have one last question. Have we compared these assessments with, and I'm not educated in it, so I'm really counting on you, with the MAP testing? I've just been told that that kind of evaluates kids at state standard rather than just a targeted, this is where we want to get you, so let's see if we can match that number. Whereas the MAP is just like, this is where we expect you to be as a state, where are you? And then it's targeted focus on how can we help you get there? Just curious.
Yeah, I think Dr. Quang might be able to speak to that, too. I think that was prior to when I came on, that was also discussed as an option. I think the main barrier there is it's pretty costly and it offers not much beyond the assessment. So when we pay for Reading Plus, all the students have access to practice any of these lessons anytime they want, vocab, reading comprehension, and we can also do the benchmarks. So it was a little bit more for what we were getting. And I think at the time, we felt comfortable with this data point coupled with everything else we have to give us a good view of what's happening.
That's all. Thank you.
We're going to hear from the Vice Chair, Member Willett, and Member DiZoglio.
I'm going to be really quick and a little bit off topic. So one thing that I consistently bring up is that this testing all stops in eighth grade. And I would really like to know the statistic of how many students we are graduating that are literate. And I don't know what literate is defined as per the state. So whatever that is, is there any way we can be testing our high school kids so that we know what our literacy rate is when we graduate the kids?
So, yes. We have been using Common Benchmarking Assessment at the high school, which was rooted in a Pearson curriculum, Pearson software, which we don't typically use very much. So we'd have to go in and manipulate the assessment and communicate to all the teachers what the assessment was. So one thing Ms. Dumont, who's the English chair at the high school, asked for this year was through, it's called Common Lit, which is a company which does texts and questions. They have benchmarking assessment for high schools, which is fairly inexpensive and pretty reputable. So again, more to state standard than just reading at. But we are going to go forward with that. So that group's going to be looking at coming up with their assessment calendar, so we'll be able to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a testing model that was discontinued. There was no fault of our own. What was that again?
Lexia Rapid.
Okay.
I think that it was actually state-recommended, and then we did it because of that.
Okay. And then the DIBELS, according to the chart I'm looking at, is going to be converted to Insight?
The DIBELS we're using for grades K through three and then four through eight, we used Reading Plus, which then changed their name to DreamBox. And the assessment that goes with that is called Insight Assessment. So I usually say all of them in case someone's familiar, but it's DreamBox, Reading Plus, Insight Assessment. And that's simply because DIBELS doesn't extend all the way through grade eight. So we have to move to something else.
Okay, so K through eight would be, would be the predominant testing model?
DIBELS and then Reading--
And then Insight would be when?
I'm sorry?
Would, one would be Insight?
Grade four is the transition.
Okay, so we don't have anything from K through eight in terms of one testing model?
No.
So we're going to go two separate testing models on the same cohort, and we're going to try to study them from kindergarten to grade eight, and we have two testing models?
There's not a lot on the market that goes beyond, most districts start middle school at grade six, so they'll have something K5, K4-ish. There's not much that goes K8 that's reputable, especially at the time of this onset. So that's why, to date, that one cohort that I mentioned, the transition or the switch, you can see that. But when they've lived in that same test for a while, it's a little bit more consistent.
And what is the interjection of the DreamBox? What does that involve? Is that a backup testing model? If you have issues with the testing of the kids, and then you say, okay, we want to do a further testing? What is DreamBox?
So DreamBox, it's entirely different. Students are presented with a passage and then questions, and depending on how they respond, the program generates a text that's higher or lower, and then they work their way up. And eventually, they answer so many questions that the program places them at a certain level. So that gauges vocabulary, reading comprehension, I-Rate, so the speed at which students are moving through a text, motivation is another, students ask, very honestly answer some questions about their motivation for reading and if they're enjoying it. And the program that students can use in the interim, they can pick their own topics, they can pick their own selections, they can choose whether they're working on vocabulary, reading comprehension. Typically, students have a harder time with the reading comprehension. And DreamBox encourages students to use their program frequently in the interim between testing, because they say more time in the program improves reading and therefore improves benchmarks. We also hear the same from all of our other programs that we use.
Okay, so like, I think you mentioned that DIBELS was a better diagnostic tool for us as opposed to the previous system, right? So DIBELS is like the lower grades, and then Insight will kick in, demarcation line will be grade, what, five through eight? K through four would be DIBELS?
Four, we test them in DreamBox. And then if there's kids who are on the cusp, that we're trying to figure out, is it because they're new to the test and they're not sure how to navigate this assessment? Or are these true areas where they're lacking? So we'll also give the DIBELS to see a little bit more information on where we're at. So we do have kids that, yes, in both might be below grade level, or we have some that when we go back and do the DIBELS, we can see a certain area they need extra support. So outside of those areas that I mentioned for the DreamBox Reading Plus assessment, it doesn't get into all of the nitty-gritty of phonics and reading like DIBELS does because that's considered more in the lower grades. So that's what the information we're trying to get when we go in.
See, my biggest concern is when you go, you take the SAT versus ACT, you go into the college, or you have the MCAS, which has been discontinued as a requirement to graduate in Massachusetts. And we had a discontinuation, no fault of our own, of a previous testing model. And then we have two separate testing models. And then you expect to do a longitudinal study of two testing models long-term. It's difficult to, it should be like K through eight, at least in the grammar school, having one testing model. And if you ever need a backup or something, it might be the DreamBox, just to do a further analysis of these kids. But it's hard to, like, when you're talking about testing models, you go through K through grade four and then five through eight, you're talking about two separate testing models.
Yeah.
Can I pop in for a second?
Do you know the problems I'm having with that?
No, yeah, no, I understand. And I think Superintendent wanted to weigh in, too. I think, and when the kids are first literally learning to read and then reading to learn, that shift happens. And so the skills that we're asking a student to demonstrate in eight are far different in case. There's a lot of companies that do that.
That's what, I just wanted to reiterate that piece, that while it makes sense to have a K, most school districts aren't K through eight, so there is that, right? We are unique. But K through three, we're actually assessing their ability to read. Starting in grade four, we're looking more at their ability to read and comprehend, right? So there's a little bit of both, but it does assess different things. Lexia did the same thing, right? The Lexia is really looking at, can the students decode and code words, right? And then we're moving into, now can they put the words together and comprehend what they're reading? And that gets, takes more skill, and obviously, it gets more challenging as the kids get older. So even when we had the Lexia V core assessment, the state did recommend it. The previous Assistant Superintendent got a substantial state grant to do our literacy work, and that was the recommendation by the state to use that program. Unfortunately, they only had it available for two years, which is why we had to make that switch. We were already using Reading Plus at that same time, too, because it was only for elementary. Yeah. Yeah, it's, the only goal-- I mean, the most important thing is that DIBELS is evidence-based, and where I'm not creating it, and so is Reading Plus, right? So anything that we're using with the Insight Assessment, I'm not creating it, right? We're not reinventing the questions, right? It's evidence-based, and Reading Plus actually came to us years ago as a secondary assessment because it was one of the few programs that would assess and keep adolescent interest in the assessment. And when I say adolescents, we used it at the high school. That's how we were introduced way back when to Reading Plus initially. So, you know, it's transitioned, but it is an adaptive reading program, so it actually meets kids where they are and helps them to practice and grow.
Yeah. Yeah, so my few questions is, especially your Wind Blocks. So according to my program that I have, so we see what the students are missing out on. Like, it could be a student failed three lessons that was just vocabulary. So what we do is we'll go in and switch the domain out. But also, what we do, when we pull them into small groups, we can print out worksheets where it capitalizes on their struggles, and we pull those groups in and we work on just what they're struggling with. Is that similar to the Wind Groups that we're doing in our schools right now?
Do you use Reading Plus, too?
We read I-Ready, yeah.
Okay, so it does have that function and that feature, where they can, the teachers can go in and find the weakness, and then it gives them like a what next step?
Okay.
So like Dr. Quang said, when I saw it working really well at the high school, we had a reading enhancement class, and the teacher would use it often and get a lot of data because kids would be in it. And then she'd pull small groups while kids were still working, and the small group would be based on which skill they were lacking, and they'd share the focus and go back, and then we'd keep going. So it's the same idea. Yeah, and in the Wind Blocks, same, except it's open to subjects beyond ELA. So sometimes we have to be a little artful when we're getting kids exposure to what they need extra help in, when it might be more than just ELA. But I know writing has been a real focus of a lot of the upper grades, too.
So, yeah, but the problem that what we've done this year, and we realized that when kids are on the electronics the entire time, what they do is they'll just keep clicking the button, but then they can redo the lesson. Like, I don't know how it works on this, but they can get the same lesson. It might be like a couple of times around, they'll go back and it'll be the same story, but they've learned that after, instead of A, B, and C, they know how to click D.
Oh, no, yeah, no, these are different stories, and if they're going too fast, the program will freeze--
Yeah.
--and lock them out, and the teacher has to come over and reset.
Oh.
And that would also, like, on the screener, that would be something that would be starred to me or flagged. But I like to look at reading rate for that, too, because some kids that think when they're taking assessment, they're being really careful and moving through it slowly. Reading Plus doesn't work that way. It thinks that they take a long time to get through a text, which might hinder their score. So we encourage them just to read in your normal pace, so we can get like a most accurate read. But sometimes by grade eight, they've been in the program for a while, and it's not as exciting, which is why at the high school, when it started, the high school was great. And then as the kids came up through the upper school and had used it for a while, they're a little frustrated by having that program again. So we're trying to spice it up a little bit in the reading support class. That's why we're going to Common Lit for their assessment, too.
And the reason why I say that is because when we print out worksheets for them, like, from the I-Ready Toolbox, it's called the I-Ready Toolbox, I realize that the kids do better when they're reading on a worksheet than they are on the computer. So they're, like, they'll get it from doing the worksheet, but then they'll go back to the computer, and they'll fill the same, like, different assessment of the same, like, subject. Like, it could be like vocabulary or reading comprehension, and they'll fail it, but when they print it out, it, so it goes back to the whole mindset of it's better reading it on a piece of paper. Do those Wind Groups do that, like, they print out worksheets?
I see a lot of pen and paperwork being, a lot of our digital tools do have that print option for teachers, even in our ELA program. Even though we have a platform with slides and everyone has access, it also has printable features. And so I see teachers mixing it up a lot.
Oh, and the last thing is, I would like to see on this data, because it shows like what the above grade level is, but then obviously, there's 34% of eighth graders at the CGS is not meeting grade level. I would love to see what grade level they're on. Meaning, like, I will tell you this, I have a student that's a sixth grader, he's reading on a second grade level. And that, to me, is where it's concerning, is in the two years, because in certain school districts, they care about the growth. But if a kid goes from second grade to fourth grade, but he's a sixth grader, they say, well, he moved up two levels. Well, in my mindset, yeah, he moved up two grade levels, but he's still behind. And that's, I think that's the problem, not just in Methuen and other districts, it's a Commonwealth problem, which we just saw in the news the other day, 60% of fourth graders in the Commonwealth cannot read on grade level. And it's because these tests will say, well, there's people meeting grade level, but they don't show what grade level the other side is on. And it's disturbing when an eighth grader is reading on a third grade level, about to go into high school, and he's reading on a third grade level. So I would like to see that data, where we have these kids that are not meeting grade level, where are they falling, and is it consistent? Because if they are consistently on that third grade level, what are we doing for that individual to make sure he's improving? Because if he's in eighth grade, he's going to freshman year. Even if he's a freshman and he gets up to sixth grade, he's still going sophomore year on a sixth grade level. That, to me, is really worth some about how he's passing high school, like, if he can't read. So that's why I also brought up a few months ago why we should move the grade, the passing grade to a C, is because times have changed since when we were in high school, where we're going to summer school if we can't read, or we're doing extra classes, et cetera. But I think I've yielded my time.
Just want to keep in mind, we've been meeting since 4:30. It's almost nine o'clock. We're still not through this presentation. We just took a breather here for some comments. Member Maxwell has a very brief follow-up, and then we can move on.
My follow-up question just is, I know that DIBELS is offered, and I did just find out that the teachers are administering the test, so I don't want to push this, but DIBELS is offered through eighth grade, K through eight?
No, it isn't.
Is that just in our district or in general? Because on the DIBELS website, it does say that we, it is offered K through eight.
It's K through six. It's really not appropriate. I mean, we have kids in eighth grade, we have kids in fifth grade who are reading beyond high school. So that would tell us nothing about them. Because it would just kind of cease, like, they're at this fifth, fourth grade level, but we don't know how to help further. So our goal is to have all the students grow, not just to reach this threshold and kind of take a breath. So it doesn't give us what we're looking for, because it would be a lot simpler to have--
One.
No doubt about that. But we're just trying to have accurate reads on the kids.
Real quick, we're about 10 minutes to nine. We actually need to take a vote to extend the meeting. Motion for Member Willett, second for Member Shabelia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going past nine.
Okay. All right, so to continue with Objective One, Learning Acceleration Network walkthrough snapshots. So this is the TNTP, and that is the name of the company. It used to be called the New Teacher Project. It's not anymore. It's TNTP. We met them through our GLEAM grant, and they helped us implement EL education in grades eventually five through eight. And they also helped us with some work in our lower schools. They are our partner for LAN. And so our consultant comes through and visits the district a few times a year. It's not to the extent that it was with GLEAM. We don't go through every single room. It's not as in-depth a rubric, it's just a snapshot. The Core-- The core actions are the same. So what we're looking at, our kids focused on high-quality text. Does the lesson employ questions and tasks which integrate the depth of the standards? And I underline depth, because all the lessons we've seen have been in subject area-aligned and related to the standards, but it's really being very particular in the depth of the standard. And then in our action three, are students responsible for doing the thinking? So we're, we're, we pretty much have the high-quality text thing down. When we go into a class, the text that students have is of high quality. Some of the rooms we went through were prepping for MCAS or doing presentations, listening to their classmates, and it happened to have a text out. But all the texts we saw are high-quality. The depth of the standard is something that we want to continue to explore more. We're getting closer. But what we want to make sure is that students are growing year to year and really understanding all the aspects. And there's some just very particular wording in the standards that we want to make sure they're getting to. And then are students responsible for doing the thinking? So from September, when 15% of the classrooms were rated as doing so, now in the most recent visit, 55% were related to doing so. So that would be walk into a room, and it's not necessarily the teacher doing what I'm doing now, but the students working together in groups, problem-solving, puzzling through things, and the teacher kind of moving as facilitator, and students creating a product in a lot of circumstances. So we're pleased with that. And then finally, I want to talk about our ELA program exploration and pilot. So our agreement with Wonders, which is our current ELA program, comes to an end this year. We were in it for six years. And so we're considering where to go next. And these are the three programs that we had narrowed it to. So Wonders has a new version, 2023. The EL education for K4, which is, that's the one we have for upper school now. And then Amplify, who's the company that creates DIBELS? Amplify, CKLA, their new version 3E, which starts in 2025. So those were all highly rated on Curate, EdReports, for standards alignment, teacher usability, a lot of neighboring districts use them. So we narrowed it down to focus on those three. And so in November, I introduced those programs to all the K4 teachers. And then we asked if anyone would be interested in piloting. So we asked all K4 teachers. Anyone that raised their hand had the opportunity. And so we've actually had teachers from various grade levels living in each of the new programs with their students to see how it goes. And so that's been really interesting to see. In March, we had, at our PD time, had the publishers come in to talk and present their products to K4 teachers, and they rotated through in a workshop style, so that those who weren't piloting learned directly from the source about the program. I surveyed teachers to get a sense of their impressions, what were strengths and weaknesses, what are they worried about? There was some additional support provided to piloting teachers. We've been going through classrooms of piloting teachers, just to see what the landscape looks like, trying to see if, if the vision of learning that the instructional material is suggesting aligns with ours, watching students' response to the lessons. And then on April 7th, we went to Dr. Quang's office with all the piloting teachers and heard from them directly. They reviewed the surveys that all the teachers had filled out and said whether they thought the concerns were valid in terms of what their experiences were, what their strengths were. We provided them some updates. And on Thursday of this week, we have another PD time. So we're going to have the panels of piloting teachers share their experiences with their colleagues. I have some information from other districts who do use the materials. And eventually, we need to arrive at the decision of where we're going forward. And so I think we're in a, we're in a good spot. There were a lot of opinions shared at our most recent convening with Dr. Quang. The teachers were really excited. If anything, I think it's, we have, a lot of teachers are excited about what they're piloting and their kids are really responding. So we've gotten emails from some parents through teachers that have said, you know, my child came home talking about the content that they're working on in the book and wanted me to write a book with them or wanted to talk about this. And these are kids from kindergarten all the way up through grade four. So a lot of the newer programs are really focused on content. So what are the topics that we're covering while we're doing the reading things? And really becoming very interesting to children. So we've seen a lot of kids having neat discussions and the teachers have been pretty responsive. So we're looking forward to this Thursday. Okay, oh, yeah, here's some photos. Okay, so this is when we had the rotations of the publishers doing their presentations. And then the piloting teachers had committed to trying the program for at least seven weeks to give it a good go. And if they wish to continue through the end of the school year, if they thought that were better for their students to not interrupt them, they can certainly do that. I just listed out PD that's related to Objective One throughout the year. And I'll keep going for the sake of time, unless there's questions on anything I've just said.
You can have questions at the end.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go through them all. So I can take a note, welcome. Okay, Objective Two, reduce the opportunity and achievement gaps between student groups. So this would be the strengthening co-teaching, co-planning, implementing supports and interventions, making sure leaders and educators are using culturally, linguistically sustaining practices, targeting utilization of supports. So here's what I've covered the first two quarters. For this quarter, I wanted to highlight the CSST update, which is the Comprehensive Student Support Team. Wanted to give you an update on the Blue Engine co-teaching inclusive teaching model at the high school. And then I wanted to highlight the promotion of college and career opportunities for MHS students, because a big part of this objective is we want to make sure all of our students are aware of pathways and opportunities that are available to them, not just the ones who are very familiar with our system or families who know how to navigate it. So for the CSST, the Comprehensive Student Support Team, that we've worked with DUCI to complete the needs assessment and engage in action planning in association with the SEL and Mental Health Grant. So John Crocker's been leading a lot of this work. So the team's currently engaged in the work to develop an action plan, neat, based on their needs assessment. Liz Folks, who's our teacher leader for health, has also been working, Mr. Crocker. She attended a conference with him to talk about how we could see what's being done in classrooms and on the counseling side to address student needs. Blue Engine, that's the group that helps us with our model or vision of co-teaching at the high school. Remember, we have the three target pairs we've been working with, special education, general education, or English learner education, general education. The pairs have been going really well. They've been going through full coaching cycles. Our consultants come out and walk through classes and doesn't just leave it at that, then meets with the groups and talks through how they can improve. Teachers have been very receptive to that in our pairs. We're hoping for a train the trainer sort of model, where they take their expertise and can help us spread that throughout the district. The consultant has also offered professional development for any co-teaching pairs who want to sign up together on prior professional development days. So we've had, we've had about a dozen pairs take part in that, and they've done some really cool gallery walk activities and has kind of broke the ice of how to work together. All the while, the high school's been creating a guiding vision for co-teaching and co-planning, guiding documents, and really kind of trying to parse out what is the role of a program assistant as a, in a classroom versus the role of teachers in a co-taught setting? What does that look like? What are the responsibilities? And so it's been really nice to be able to have time to delineate that. Here's some quick data from Blue Engine. And again, it's just the three pairs. I know the font's small at the top. That's the rubric or the levels that Blue Engine rates on. So from beginning, development, developing, achieving, and expanding. So the pathways that the high school chose to focus on is Pathway One. Teachers use daily mastery data to determine and effectively lead differentiated small groups. So you can see at the start of our work, teachers were between a one and a two. So beginning and a, and a developing. So we found teachers were using data, but more after like a big benchmark, not daily data that they're gathering from students, observations of students or how they're completing work right in front of them. They would wait to make a big shift. So we're encouraging teachers to make a shift in real time. So if you notice kids need something, group them right there. Couple them up and have different plans for different levels of instruction. And at this point, this was a couple of months ago, we had finished Pathway One, our observations of that. Teachers had progressed to moving closer to achieving on a consistent basis, which is really good growth in a very short amount of time, the first time we've really worked on this. And then Pathway Four, teachers will be able to maximize collaborative planning time so that it leads to results for all students. So the high school is intentional about creating that time for teachers, where they would be aligned and be able to meet and work together. And this, it was easy to do with a pair of three. It would be more complicated to do across the board, but we're going to be thinking about that. And we really were helpful, I think, through Blue Engine of giving teachers a structure of not just to sit together and not know where to take it, but to give them common language to make their discussions really impactful. So again, there was some growth there and we're not finished in that pathway. So our consultant's still working on that one with our teachers this year. Okay, and these are the opportunities I want to highlight, offer to our students in Methuen High School. And I wanted to, to give kudos to the counseling department, who spearheads a lot of this work. So Methuen High School, I know if you're aware, hosts its own College and Career Fair in the fall. So this past October, these are just some of the colleges, universities, career and armed forces representatives who attended and had booths. And so the students can go and move through, get information, ask questions. But I think it's really nice that we come, we have people come to the school early in the fall to meet with our seniors. In March, we had the Vocational Technical Trade Community College and Career Fair. So again, here's just some of the representatives that attended. So students in grade 12 can have access to the fair to learn about post-secondary plans that they think may suit them, or just to ask questions, or to figure out how do I get from A to Z, if this is what I want to do. At the end of March, grade 11 students had the opportunity to go to the Boston National College Fair. And so that, that is four-year, two-year, technical, business, all types of schools there. And there's also some workshops the kids can take part in to learn about schools that are out there, opportunities that are available. And then finally, Ms. Tetro has been really excited about this. This has always been a longstanding event at the high school. There, there's a table outside at the cafeteria and as students come and go on the way to lunch, there'll be a representative there from a college, trade, or career, in case someone wants to stop by and ask questions, or the armed forces. And they've really worked hard. This was a growing list. This is not comprehensive. But I think they, yeah, they had Yale there the other day and a bunch of different types of schools are coming and kids are asking like, what is this about? And so I'm really happy to have those opportunities available to kids, too. And then here's just some PD that relates to our reducing achievement and opportunity gaps. Objective Three, this is enhancing the partnerships with students and families. So we're thinking about empowering student voice, improving chronic absenteeism rates, increasing communication, targeted mental health supports. So I'm just going to talk briefly, give some updates. Here we go. Okay, so the Methuen Parent and Student Advisory Council had identified an area of focus at their most recent meeting. Mr. Crocker asked me to share with you. And so the members will work to develop parent guardian resources that are based in Trails, which is our Wellness SEL curriculum, which is delivered through lower school health and classrooms, general ed classrooms. And so this will be a complement to help parents and guardians guide their students through these topics at home that aligns with common language from what they're hearing in school, which makes a lot of sense. And then vision of the graduate is a phrase you're going to be hearing a lot of. So from our NIESC accreditation, the Collaborative Conference, we and they agreed that we need to start our vision of the graduate process, which I think we've talked about for a long time, and now we're ready to go. So this is the articulated vision, K-12 and community-wide, of what we would like Methuen High School students to embody and be able to do when they say, I'm a graduate of Methuen High School and I'm a proud graduate of Methuen High School. So what skills do we believe are important? And so most recently, I went to a NIESC educator showcase. I'd previously been a chair of the NIESC accreditation at the high school. I was accompanied by the high school principal, Mr. Corret. Ms. Dumont is a chair as well, and Ms. Moore was there. And we sat in on some of the sessions, learning how other schools did it and made it fun. It's really engaging for students, you all, parents, teachers. There's a lot of steps that we need to go through, but the whole idea is to really foster students' education and to make sure everyone's prepared. So it's kind of exciting. So that'll be coming up. And then our Methuen Village partnership. So Ashley Gonzalez, who's the Village and Rich Life Director, had reached out and said, I would love to do something with the schools, because I see that there's a lot of residents here who have stories they want to share and want to impact people's lives. So I enlisted Cheryl Mancini, who has helped with this. And so I just wrote out the events or offerings that our students have provided for Methuen Village residents. And I think it's been a really great partnership for both parties. I didn't include that here, because I didn't think it would be appropriate, but they interviewed residents and made really neat videos. There were, there's all kind of art workshops. And so it's been a really great experience. And so thank you, Ashley, for reaching out about that and for Cheryl for organizing. And then just some of our highlighted events. There's been lots going on in terms of schools offering their literacy nights. And also, another standing event that we added consistent across all schools is the English Learner Student Showcase, where parents are invited in to see the progress of their students' language development and students present their work to their parents. So each school's been doing it in a slightly different way, but we've had excellent attendance. And so we look forward to having that be one of our standing items, as well as a lot of grade level offerings that we've seen. And then the Credit for Life Fair at Methuen High School. So again, an event that we host in collaboration with Mary Mag Valley Credit Union. So the students select a job, what they might want to be when they grow up, and they have a spreadsheet on their iPad, which then gives them all different budgets, depending on what their job is. And they need to move through each booth, for instance, housing, transportation, clothing, all the things that adults need to consider, and they need to make choices. And as they make choices, their spreadsheet goes in the red or in the black, and then they go to the spin the wheel and they could have a traumatic life event and all their money's gone, or they have something positive. But the kids get really into it and they, they learn as they go. So we have a lot of community members who volunteer their time at each station and are specialists in those areas. And that's always a great event for us this year. We had Socrates de la Cruz, who's a community member, lawyer and businessman, give the keynote address. So all the kids loved it and heard him talk, and then they went off and made their, their choices about credit. And then finally, this was in one of our key actions we were interested in learning about, because we didn't gather data on this prior. How many grade nine students, is what we're looking at specifically, are involved in extracurriculars at the high school? So by doing that, we're using Infinite Campus, collecting rosters from club advisors or coaches, loading them into Infinite Campus, and then running reports. And I was curious to see how many were involved in at least one or two or more. So to date, we have 75 activities in here and we don't- So to date, we have 75 activities in here and we don't have them all. So for the next quarterly, my plan is, we have just a handful left. Add in the others because there's some that are tied to courses that I need to get the rosters for. For instance, like marching band isn't in here yet. And then I want to delineate that by our student groups for objective two. So we're thinking about English learners, thinking about students with disabilities, all students group. And then we can talk about potential goals for next year for involvement. Or then even furthermore, I'm interested in inquiring about the students who didn't participate. What were their barriers to participation and how can we get them involved? So is it, they're not interested in something? Do they not, not know about it? Is it transportation? Because we have a lot of guesses, but we haven't asked specifically. So these are the numbers as they stand now, but they're still growing. Okay. That concludes quarter three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Member Maxwell.
When it comes to objective three, I love objective three. I know that in the beginning of my school committee journey, I met with Dr. Kwong and we sat down and discussed how we could bring parents back into school and could have more student engagement. So I love seeing all of these numbers because I think this is so important and parents love being back in school. So I, I love this. I think you're doing a great job with that. And as far as objective two, I was just curious with the pilot programs. Is there like one in each school? Is it just one particular teacher?
So the, the programs looking at it are K through four. We have at least one teacher piloting every grade and every program, with the exception of in one program, we don't have a kindergarten teacher. But they're primarily at the CGS because those are the teachers that raise their hand to do it. We do have sprinklings in other schools, too. And so we've been really deliberate about going out and seeing all the, the different classrooms and how it looks. And that's why we're offering so many opportunities for people to learn from their colleagues and work together. Because there are some people that might not have seen their neighbor using one or another. But we're happy to have even representation between the three. Keep it fair.
Do you have an idea of which program teachers are preferring or liking better than the others or?
Yeah, I have some hunches, but I think after Thursday, we're going to ask them. We like to do the, the exit ticket at the end where they, if they had to pick right now, what would they pick? But there's lots of components to consider and a lot of bells and whistles and, and things, too. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Speaking of the pilots, did you by any chance test kids before you started the pilot and then test it at the end so we could see how much progress was made with each different program so that we knew which one was actually more effective for the kids?
No, because I, they're effective in different ways. So a lot of them are really good about fostering discourse and collaboration between students, which might be hard to measure off the cuff. A lot of them build content knowledge over time. So if you stay in the program, like you're, you're evolving that, that development. And that also, some of the piloting teachers, because the routines are really new in the new programs, started with module one to build in those routines, whereas in other curriculum, they're in different pieces. But they have different offerings in terms of the number of materials the teacher needs to sort through, how easy is it for them to use? How many, how many decisions do they need to make in instructional period? Is there a lot of planning that goes in ahead or not? And is that good or not as good? And so, yeah, we're interested to see, to see the results.
Okay, thank you. My other, just a comment, and I've spoken to Martha Tatro about this, so this won't come as a shock to her, that the high school offerings for like the career fairs and the lunch things is not really accessible to our special needs population because there are lots of kids who can't go up to a table and ask, or, you know, that, that population. And I'd like to see it, I'd like people to start thinking about how do we make it more accessible to our special needs population, especially our sub-separate kids that could benefit from some of those options. And they're not having that opportunity and their families don't know about it. So there's no way for the families to even inquire with the students.
Okay.
So I just want to throw that out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Can I just make one comment if I could, because this is probably on all your minds? And so I'm going from the awesome work that we're doing to how do we make it happen financially? And so most of you are aware, in our budget, we try to lease as much as we can so that we have a consistent line item year after year. That was something that Sean Cronin really taught Ian and I. Like you, the more you can do that, the more beneficial it will be because you have a stagnant line item and you can plan for it. So one of the things that we did is we did that six years ago. We actually bundled the entire New Wonders program and costed out for six years and we leased it. So we had the same, you know, cost in our budget year over year so that we could plan for it. And we are 100% going to do the same thing regardless of what plan we're doing here. We're looking at the cost of what is the cost over six years? What's that bundle? How do I go out for leasing so that we have the same cost over six years? It's, it's, we're not a district that can just buy a whole new English program for so many kids and classroom teachers in one year. Some smaller districts can do that. So we have found that that is going to be the best way to move forward. So we already have line items in place in the current budget that this new will replace. And we're, we're doing our best right now to account for that. Not sure exactly the final product, but Dr. Golovski and Mr. Gazan have worked to make sure that we have a really good estimate in the money that we're looking at right now of what that would be each year for the next six years. So just so everybody understands how that would work moving forward.
Any other questions? I've been under the weather for the past week and I'm losing my voice, so I apologize. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to finance and operations, the expenditure report. Any questions from the committee regarding the expenditure report? Anything? Okay. We need a motion in a second to approve the transfer of fiscal year 25 funds to contracted services. Motion from the vice chair, second from member Shabilia, discussion. Take a roll call.
Member Dezoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan? Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willeth? Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Six one, six zero one.
And next on the agenda, we have the revolving funds report. Any questions or concerns in the committee?
Question?
Member Shabilia?
The lost books, Chromebook repair. And this goes back to the question I asked about the leases, which we'll get to, and the liquidation of the old asset. Where is this 45-ish thousand, well, 57,000 that's received? Where is that money coming from for Chromebooks?
So when students break, lose, we collect 57 grand a year today? Well, some of that. You asked what we do with the old, old, like iPads. So what, we've done it two ways. We've, we've gone through a company and gone out and asked for, it's like an auction. And they go out and we say, we have X number of devices and we'll get companies coming and say, we'll give you X number of dollars. We've done that in the past. This past year, we, we went out and we got three companies that we know that's what they do, and we asked them for their best price. They came in and they looked at them, they got the best price. We used that money. That money went in here and we use that to offset some of our insurance on devices. So we pay for insurance so that when they accidentally break, it's not necessarily, you know, malicious.
Apple Care.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's how we sell them. We don't do a lot with Chromebooks yet because quite frankly, at the end of four years, they're in rough condition. We're hoping this year we can, we can sell some of them. But we do keep some, keep a lot for loaners for, to keep in-house or for testing.
All right. That'll, I'll, I'll save the rest of that until we get to the lease portion. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding council, member Dezoglio?
I'm just, I want a quick update with the parking lot revolving fund. Just questions of what we're planning on doing with that revolving fund.
Well, I had a conversation. We do have a quote for cameras and lights out here in the parking lot to the tune of $120,000.
Not out here at the high school.
Oh, sorry. I keep thinking about the high school. Anyway, you knew what I meant. We have 60 of it. I gotta find the other 60. I'm looking at other pockets, seeing if I can either scrounge up the 120 through revolving accounts or whatever to get it done right away, or if it makes sense to do it in phases, you know, have all the lights done and then second phase, when I get another 60, do all the cameras. So we're, we're in those discussions right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Willeth?
Hey, man, this is, goes back to last year. Is it possible to do it piecemeal? I talked about, was it dumping issues along the trail? I don't know if that's a reoccurring issue, if that's been resolved. Dumping signs, strategic cameras, lighting just in that area. Because obviously if people are dumping, they might be doing other activities and we don't want them on our campus, especially overnight. So if that's something, again, I don't want to telegraph something.
It'd be great to get it all done at once, but if we did it piecemeal, I'd want to start at the lower half where it's darkest and.
It's been an ongoing concern.
More problematic.
I don't, you know, I don't know if the DPW's going over there and cleaning up on a regular basis, or if we've resolved the dumping issue, but I know that was something that was brought to my attention. So that was the only thing I have an ongoing concern with. So maybe get an update and see if there's any signage or, you know, a strategy until we get the other money to do everything.
Right.
I mean, I'd rather have that, even a little piecemeal of that. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, move on to the grants report. Any questions from the committee? All right, move on. Student activity reports. Any questions from the committee? Member, member Maxwell?
I know that we have an approval in here to kind of change some accounts, but is there a way to make it more, so they all have the same type of accounts? So like the Marsh, for instance, has upper level events and like that's not on the Tenny, you know, or the Tenny has end of year activities, whereas the March doesn't, you know?
Those are almost, they're almost identical, just named different.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I can streamline the names if that'd make it.
I think it's just easier to like see.
But also there are some, there are like some schools who have, for some reason, 4,000 bowlers.
Bowlers, yeah.
And other schools can't get anyone to bowl. So it doesn't make sense to have a bowling club.
I didn't even know we had a bowling club.
There you go. Some schools do and one school is looking to remove it because they haven't had interest in the last four years.
Any other questions? All right, we need to move on to the student activity account reauthorization. We need a motion in a second to approve that.
Some of them.
Motion from the vice chair, second from member Donovan. Any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the food services report. Any questions from the committee? Member Shabilia?
Is this cooler that's going out for bid going to be extraordinary maintenance? Or is that going to be CIP? What, what's something like that?
That's going to be food services. They also are self-contained. They, we, we don't pay anything towards food services. They bring in their own money and they spend it.
Even better. Thank you.
And that's one of those big items like Canada talked about upgrading our equipment, et cetera, and using some of those funds we have.
Any other questions? All right, move on to contracts. We need a motion in a second to approve the Apple iPad lease.
Some of them.
Motion from the vice chair, the seconds from member Donovan. Member Maxwell?
I only have a concern with the price with everything that's coming up on Wednesday. I just, I worry about leasing technology stuff when we're going to have to lay off some staff, so. Is there a way to bring back more pencil and paper so that maybe we could avoid having to bring in computers? Or is it just kind of a wash anyway? Because we're going to be spending the money on supplies.
So it is a wash, two things. We wouldn't, at this point, most companies actually aren't selling textbooks to us anymore. They are all licenser, licensed software licenses. So that's one piece of it. They're really marketing to the license, not necessarily the textbook. And for us to go back to textbooks would be really, really challenging and very expensive because every one kid has, you know, a $70, $75 textbook. So again, this, this is the iPad program at the high school has been the most successful that we've had over the course of 10 to 12 years. The kids are using it. They use it better than most adults are using it with the difference, you know, everything. I mean, again, my daughter was, that's what she uses in, in college is the iPad because of what she had exposed to in high school. So I just, I would not recommend at all that we get rid of the iPads or the Chromebooks at this point. I just don't know how we would do it.
And why the difference between iPads versus Chromebooks? Why not just all iPads or all Chromebooks?
Another great question. The iPads actually happened first and the iPads have more, I want to say diversity, but Dr. Golovski, that's probably not the right word, but they have more opportunity, educational opportunity for the, the different kinds of classes and learning and courses at the high school level than a Chromebook has. And the Chromebooks, we're really using the Chromebooks as like that little less, I'm, I'm not going to say it right because it's almost 10 o'clock.
Having run and rolled out a program very similar, your, your iPad has a much more diverse operating system that the Chromebook can't handle.
It just, it does allow for more opportunities so that we're, we're not scrambling. And when somebody's taking an AP class versus somebody's taking the world language Italian class, the operating system works for all of our kids and all of our courses, regardless of whether it's a primary source, whether it's a textbook software they're accessing, whether it's math-related apps, they just, they have that ability to access. The iPad allows us to do that.
But maybe the Chromebooks, you don't, you don't see the need for K through E.
No, we don't see the need for K through E. If, if anything, an iPad would be productive in like a K or one potentially instead of a Chromebook, which we, you know, we go back and forth with all the time of, do you bring the iPads down and have kindergartners on the iPad to do Lexia just because it's an easier device? But they learn it pretty quickly and that's what we, you know, they're not taking it home anymore. Those first, K and first graders aren't taking it home. So it's just a different world. The publishing world is not, they're not selling textbooks anymore. Yeah, it's really moved to a different place.
Member Shabilia?
So with the iPads and I guess same for the Chromebooks to come, have we considered an option for folks to, to buy them out? Because the documents you sent over that I requested earlier, we're getting less than $100 on iPad, which, I mean, if you go on Craigslist right now or Best Buy's website, a used iPad, even a, I don't know, I'm not an Apple person, but like the four models ago is still worth a couple hundred bucks on a resale market. So letting people buy them for say $150 versus selling it to a wholesaler who's going to either refurbish them and sell them or scrap them, it, it may be win-win for everybody. So that, because that's what a lot of the companies I've worked for have done when our tech refreshes, we have the opportunity to buy them out.
I'm going to say this and I hope I'd have to go back and look, so maybe I shouldn't, but I know that in the past, we looked to do that and it actually cost us more if we purchased them to purchase at the end. I'd have to go back and look. I believe that was with Mr. Lucier when we were looking at different opportunities with iPads. There was something about that when we wanted the kids to potentially buy it at the end. I'm looking at you guys, but I'd have to go back and look at our. I'm looking at you guys, but I'd have to go back and look at our, there was a reason why we didn't do that.
Fairly certain, I saw a $1 buyout line item and I don't remember which one it was.
It was on the Chromebooks.
It was Chromebooks?
Chromebooks. I'm not, I'd have to look at the legality of it because with 30B, everything has to be competitive. So if we just set the price and sell off taxpayer, taxpayer bought materials, I don't know the legality, like what the state would.
Right.
Well, I mean, if, if the market is bearing 50 bucks a unit and we're getting 150 bucks a unit.
Right.
I know 30B is a little bit of a messed up procurement law, but.
Well, maybe that's the answer. We go out and get three, get, see what best we can and then price it above that.
Right. And I think that's win-win. Kid, a kid's going to get an iPad for 150 bucks that they, they know they can use and it's theirs versus us getting $50 from it from the guy who's going to scrap the chips.
So I'd say two things. I'd say yes, we can look into that for next year. Timing of this is a little bit critical.
Yeah.
To, to actually move this because this has to go to city council because it's a lease and it's debt. So this has to get to city council and then they're chomping at the bit already to get the order so that we actually get them in the summer to prepare them for the kids. So we are up against a little bit of a time crunch to get this moving to city council.
Yeah, and apples and a quarter is coming too, so.
But I think all of those things are things we can look at for next year to see what is the best opportunity and look into the law. It gives us that time to do that. We would be happy to do that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? We need a motion and a second to approve the Chromebook lease.
So moved.
Motion from the vice chair, second from member DeZoglio. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next on the agenda is notifications of appointments and other personnel matters. We've none. Other business from the committee? I'll invite member Donovan to begin the discussion regarding the school committee training session.
Alicia from MASC is available to come and speak with us at our June business meeting, which I believe, I don't have my phone out, is June 23rd. I'm wondering how that works. It would be a workshop, we could give her some more ideas, but we initially, when we talked about it, it would be about how we can improve our procedure and therefore improve our governance. I'm wondering if that is a convenient night for everybody. I'm not sure what's on the, hopefully our budget will be done. We'll be celebrating our teachers of the year. I'm wondering, is Shale Booker?
That'd be great.
Okay, I will email her tomorrow.
Uh, next member Donovan as well, the letter?
And I'm wondering what the pleasure of the committee is at this late hour, but I passed around a letter. I've been inspired by Councilor Ferretta's interest and research on the Greater Lawrence Technical School budget, our contribution to their budget. And I think because it's hard to get some answers and understanding of the formula that is being used to tell sending communities and towns why we owe, what we owe. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity if we joined with our friends at the council who are considering something similar, but asking our state delegation to look into how, for a formal review of how that funding formula is used. I have a letter. I don't know if you want me to read it into the record. I think it would be really wonderful at perhaps our next meeting, we could take a vote and decide whether or not we all wanted to sign this because this is a huge impact on our budget. As the letter says, and I really hope you read it, I want it read into the record either tonight or when we meet in April. We will be paying and dish up $700,000 in the next fiscal year for a total of 5.4 million dollars to, for the 456 students who will be attending. There are four communities that send to the Voke, which is a great school. We are the highest contributors because of the way the funding is figured out. According to the Voke's budget book, they're going to use that money to quote, reduce student to teacher ratios, optimize instructional schedules and hire additional teachers to support curriculum development and new programs. The budget's proposing to hire 13 additional teachers and administrators, expand academic interventions, especially in literacy this year, and increase professional staff development. Everything we are afraid of losing. So obviously I think this is something, it's, the other piece is it would, I think at some point we need to ask for transparency or accountability in what non-student facing positions are being paid. For instance, the superintendent at the Voke, his salary, it'll be a $10,000 raise this year, bringing his salary to $340,000. He is supervising 1,800 students. Superintendent of Boston Public Schools who has 54,000 students across 175 schools make lists. And if you look at the superintendent's office, which consists of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent and the executive assistant to the superintendent, the total salaries paid for fiscal year 26 for those three positions, $630,000. While we, if you, I know it'll be coming up, the proposal for our superintendent's office next year, and in order to save money, will not be filling the executive assistant to the superintendent, which I don't know how we could function. But at a time when all the local schools, all the schools are being asked to do a lot less, a lot more with a lot less, I think it's time to really just look into this, decide if we are paying fairly. It's no reflection on the expertise and the value of the people who work there, the expertise and the talents of the superintendent and the board. But I think Methuen, I think we need to make sure we're providing equity and safe and the best education possible for all of our students. So I ask you to read this. I'm not sure of the procedure, mayor, but perhaps if everyone reads this and we could take a vote to, at our next meeting.
If you'd like to read into the record, that's fine. Tonight or next time, it's up to you.
You up to it?
I'm up for anything right now.
I'll go quickly, okay? And I appreciate this. And again, tip of the hat to Joel Ferretta, who kind of got this started. We are writing, Dear members of the Methuen Legislative delegation, we are writing to respectfully request your support in advocating for a formal review of the current funding formula used to calculate municipal assessments for the Greater Lawrence Technical School. Over the past several months, City Councilor Joel Ferretta and Chief Administrative and Financial Officer Maggie Dupre have worked together to gather information from the, from DESI and Greater Lawrence Technical School to better understand how the tuition formula is calculated and how it reflects the financial obligations of each municipality. Despite their efforts, they have not received clear or satisfactory answers. It's unclear when, when the current formula was last reviewed and we believe it may not no longer reflect the evolving demographics and financial realities of our communities. In fiscal year 2026, Methuen's assessment to GLTS will increase by almost 700,000 totaling over 5.4 million, a significant and growing obligation that the city continues to meet in full. While Methuen students make up 25% of the student population, with 456 students enrolled for the 2025, 2026 school year, Methuen contributes the largest share among the four sending communities, Lawrence, North Andover and Andover. According to the fiscal year 26 GTLTS budget book, money will be used to reduce student to teacher ratios, optimize instructional schedules and hire additional teachers to support curriculum development and new programs. The budget proposes the hiring of 13 new teachers and administrators, expanded academic interventions, especially in literacy, and increased professional staff development. Meanwhile, Methuen public schools, like many districts across Massachusetts, face a budget crisis that could result in the loss of dozens of staff positions, larger class sizes and the reduction of essential student services. As you are aware, much of this crisis is fueled by a chapter 70 formula that is not, has not adequately accounted for inflation in determining state support. This disparity raises serious concerns about equity and resource allocation and our shared responsibility to support all Methuen students. We are also concerned about how Methuen taxpayer dollars are being allocated within the GLTS budget, particularly with regard to administrative salaries. This year, the GLTS superintendent will receive a $10,000 raise, bringing his salary to 340,000, making him the highest paid superintendent in the state, despite overseeing fewer than 1,800 students on one campus. By comparison, the superintendent of Boston Public Schools, who oversees 54,000 students across 175 schools earns 300,000. According to the GTLS budget book, the combined salaries of the superintendent's office, which includes the assistant and the executive assistant, will total $630,000. At a time when local schools are being asked to do more with less, it is difficult to justify continued increases in our assessment without greater transparency and accountability in how these funds are spent in non-student facing positions. We are proud of the opportunities GTLS provides to many Methuen students and want to see these opportunities continue. No member of our board is questioning the value of the school, the expertise of its leadership or its elected board. However, it is essential to ensure that all Methuen students, whether attending Methuen or public schools or GLTS, have access to safe, well-staffed schools and robust educational programming. We respectfully urge you to advocate for a formal review of the funding formula and its impact on sending districts like Methuen. A fair, transparent and updated approach will help us ensure that every public dollar is used effectively to support student success. Thank you for your continued partnership and advocacy on behalf of Methuen students. Welcome if anyone wants to edit this, you know, provide additional information or have concerns.
Fantastic.
Well.
So maybe at the next meeting we can have that as an agenda. Uh, anything? Any other comments or discussion? Other business from the committee? All right. At this point, with no other further business.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. I'm just looking at the time and people's faces. And I don't mean that in a, I know, like we're all about, I just.
And a little push from Mr. Goslin.
And a little push from Mr. Goslin. I'd be, I, we're totally, we can move the executive session to Wednesday night and just amend the agenda on the website for.
I don't want to be the bad or bad.
Oh, well, we can't do that?
We can keep going, that's fine.
Because we got 15 minutes, so I just, I'm looking at the time.
Yeah.
So time and people's energy. But keep going. It's the policy that we're done by 10:00, so I think regardless of where we are.
So.
If we have to carry it forward, we'll carry it forward.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah. All right, so let me finish reading this.
Me?
So, excuse me. With no further business to discuss, we need a motion and a second to adjourn the business session tonight and enter into executive session.
So moved.
Motion from member Chabilla, the seconds from member Donovan. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares Unit B. Also pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel unaffiliated, we would not reconvene into open session at the conclusion of the executive session. So we'll take a roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yep.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell? Member Chabilla?
Aye.
Member Wille? Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. The time is 9:45 PM and our open session is adjourned and we'll enter executive session.
Good night, everyone.